And here to those in person and for those who are live streaming, we also welcome our community members in Catalina who are joining us as well. So I will have Mr. Miller lead us in the pledge since he's already standing. And now I will ask our legal counsel to take a roll call and establish a quorum.
Okay, Member Lopez.
Present.
Vice President Otto.
Aye.
President Craighead.
Here.
Member Benitez.
Here.
And Member Miller.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took reportable action on the following items. On item 3.1, the Board voted 4-0 with Member Miller absent to approve public employee appointments. And I will ask Dr. Baker to provide more information.
Thank you. At this moment, I would like to announce the approval of the appointment of Dr. Dmitya Myers-Miller to the position of interim Assistant Superintendent in the Office of Curriculum, Instruction, and Professional Development. I think that Dr. Dmitya Myers-Miller is in the audience, so I would like for her to come to the podium just to be introduced. You don't have to say anything, so we can also give you a round of applause. You'll learn much more about Dmitya as she joins the senior team after her 32 years of service in our schools as teacher, as vice principal, as administrative assistant, as principal, and most recently as director and principal supervisor. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Also, a moment to recognize Dr. Christopher Lund, who will be leaving after next week, heading into retirement in the future, has served in public education for 35 years, both in Long Beach Unified School District and outside of Long Beach Unified School District, and has been such a wonderful force of good in our district, serving as director after being a principal, coming into the district as a principal, serving as director as the Assistant Superintendent in several divisions, including research, middle and K-8 schools, and most recently, the Office of Curriculum Professional Development. And we know that he will make the transition smooth for Dmitya as she takes over and follows in his shoes. And we're so grateful for all that you have brought into the district and the way that you have built such leaders and served students in your years in Long Beach Unified. So thank you. We have one other administrative assignment tonight, and I'll turn to Dr. Brown for that.
Good evening. I'm pleased to announce Dr. Dana Belvin moving from the role of psychologist to administrative assistant in the Center of Black Student Excellence.
Well, congratulations to everyone, retiree, interim, everybody. It's kind of that time of year when transitions are taking place. Also, for the report on item 3.2, the Board voted 4-0 with Member Miller absent to approve the separation agreement for certificated employee number E00285818. And next, we have adoption of the agenda. But before we move to adopt the agenda, there's a slight modification on item 14.3. In the Classified Personnel Report, under Termination of Service, amend the agenda to replace employee number E00743329 with employee number E00740953. So we will be mindful of that as we adopt the agenda. Just need a motion.
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda is adopted as amended. And next, we are at recognitions and acknowledgements. And so tonight, we recognize our student board member, Alana. And Alana, we have a plaque for you. It commemorates your term here, serving on the Board. And I just want to thank you for stepping up to take this position. You applied with many other very highly qualified students. You interviewed, like a job, with the superintendent and myself. And I know it has not been an easy position to be in as our student board member, and you have done it beautifully, and we appreciate your dedication and commitment to this. So please join me in a round of applause for Alana. And then I think it would be fun to take a picture. And by the way, the plaque does have a picture, but we're going to do another one commemorating your year. So we'll just take a little.
Madam Chair, do we have an opportunity to say a few individual words to?
Absolutely.
Remember I know you?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, let's do that.
So echoing what our president has shared, Alana, I think everyone would agree that you've made our Board proud, our school district proud, the students proud. Just deep, deep gratitude and appreciation, and highest commendation for the amazing job that you did as a school board member, not just representing the voices of students, but showing everything that we aspire to be as a school system. And so I'm just honored and proud that you were able to serve with us. And then you served as a great role model for my daughter as well.
Alana, I also want to say that your voice was needed. You brought great insight to the Board, and you did an outstanding job representing the thousands of students that you represented this year. Congratulations and thank you.
I would not only echo that, but say I've seen you grow in this job and very well represent the students of the Long Beach Unified School District. And I get to ask you the question that we ask everybody, and so what are you going to do next year?
Yeah, so next year, starting in the fall, I'll be attending Brigham Young University in Provo, Utah, and I'll be studying mechanical engineering with an emphasis in aerospace.
Well, like everyone, I have a special privilege of having her on my right side here, so I get to chat with her all the time and talk about just how important your role has been on the Board. I appreciate the -- well, there's two parts to it. Obviously, given that student perspective is something that's important to us, especially as a Board and our system. But what I appreciate more than anything is that you were highly involved in these conversations. I think that it would be easy for a young person to hear some of these 50,000-foot conversations and the use of some acronyms. We don't use as many acronyms anymore, but the use of some acronyms that could be a little bit over your head maybe to a certain extent. And it would be easy for you to disengage to a certain extent, but you were often involved and would even nudge me and say, hey, I don't have that in my packet. Can I work? Can I use yours? And so I just appreciated you being involved. And that was humbling, to say the least. And so I'm just really, really proud of you, and I look forward to your continued success over at BYU. I don't know if you have plans on playing quarterback, but they've had a couple of good ones come through there.
Okay, so let's take a little pause and do a picture. on your service as a student board member that you'd like to share with us?
Of course. Do you want me to do it now, or do you want me to wait till the end? I can do either.
Well, I'm a little conflicted because I think this meeting might be long, and...
I should be staying till the very end.
Okay.
It's my last one, I want to end it out strong.
Okay. Okay, so we can't...
You're doing homework, is what you're saying?
I actually do. I'm actually taking a calculus class, but...
Okay, so your choice.
I'm going to be staying.
Okay. In which case, I will turn it over to you anyhow, because I believe we're having you read a June 19th statement.
I am. So tomorrow, we celebrate Juneteenth, so we just have a little bit of information about that, just the history of it. Juneteenth is short for June 19th. This date commemorates the effective end of slavery in the United States. This day marks when federal troops arrived to Gavelstone, Texas, a whole two years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. The Emancipation Proclamation, issued by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, declare that all enslaved individuals in Confederate states rebelling against the Union would be thenceforward and forever free. This did not immediately free any enslaved individuals. It only pertained to Confederate-controlled areas. Enslaved people sought freedom behind Union lines as northern troops progressed into the Confederate South. In Texas, slavery had continued as the state did not have significant presence of Union troops. As the war came to a close in the spring of 1865, General Granger's arrival in Gavelstone, that June signaled freedom for Texas's 250,000 enslaved people. Emancipation didn't happen overnight for everyone, but that December, slavery in America was formally abolished with the adoption of the 13th Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. And now I will direct our attention to the screens for our vision and action.
Won the national championship, the biggest thing that you can get in the U.S., so it means a lot. But it was definitely the most challenging tournament I've ever been to, given the competition and just the stature. Drone soccer is an esport that came over from South Korea around three years ago, and it's kind of migrated around the U.S. You learn how to design. You learn how to research. You learn how to test what different aspects change things, and this can all help in an engineering standpoint.
It's a pretty big educational value. I mean, it brings students together to collaborate, learn leadership, and it's a good team sport to learn.
We won two years ago, but then last year, we got second place to Cabrillo. But then this year, we beat them in the final, actually. And it was really nice because we're both from Long Beach, so we're kind of rivals like that.
So it was just nerve-wracking, like, oh, are we going to get that final point? Are we going to win this? And we did.
We're going to go to Shanghai, China, for the International World Cup, and we're going to play against other countries. I went there two years ago, and we got first place, so hopefully we can do that again.
I'm happy that we're going, and that's really all that matters to me.
And I think we have a second. Okay. Well, that's very impressive. And also that we have two of our own schools in the finals, so Cabrillo and Sato. And we love that. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the Special Education Local Plan for the 2025-2026 school year, and annual budget plan and annual service plan. So this is the time set aside for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item?
We have nobody speaking.
Okay. So seeing that we have no one who wishes to speak to this item, I declare the hearing closed. And next, we have on the agenda, public testimony on items listed on the agenda.
We have no speakers for items listed on the agenda.
So I will go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
And we do have four speakers for items not listed on the agenda.
Thank you.
And I'm just trying to get to the list. Who's the first?
Hello. I am a parent. Teachers are wonderful, and they should be held accountable to the current grading policy that was established for uniformity, fairness, and consistency. It emphasizes clear communication of grading policies. I have requested a syllabus for my son's class, but I haven't seen it, and school is over. In January, the teacher was emailed with questions. What is this assignment? How is it graded? What are the points for? No response. I came to the school in February. They said I had to talk directly to the teacher, who I then emailed. The father emailed the teacher as well, but she was not available. In March, my son got eight out of 10, eight out of 10, seven out of 10, and 6.5 out of 10. What are the points for? This is PE, so is it jumping jacks? Is it push-ups? I don't know. I still don't know. Online, it says fitness participation. He is supposed to be able to make it up if it's seven out of 10 right. How can he make up push-ups? And wait, absolutely no communication has come from the teacher at all. This does not sound like clear communication. This does not sound like it's equitable. The teacher has not, did not respond to multiple emails or phone calls. I did actually go to the school as well. I have talked to the parent facilitator, who couldn't see the syllabus. There is a link on Canvas, but when you click on it, nothing. I have talked to the counselor and the assistant principal, and no syllabus or explanation. Until September, I'm sorry, June 9th, when the teacher gave me an overview of the grading system. It was extremely ambiguous and very vague, and then said that the grade was final and couldn't be changed, and then signed in the end of it, Department Head. I am shocked that this is allowed. My son has an excuse and an explanation on why he couldn't fully participate, and I did provide that to the teacher the very next day. What is the teacher's explanation? What is your explanation? Is it, in fact, a grading policy, or is it a grading suggestion? A grading recommendation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shwetha Singh Luth.
Hello, good evening. My name is Shwetha Singh Luth. I have a daughter who just finished TK at Bobby Smith Elementary in District 2, and she's going to be attending kindergarten there next year as well. After Smith, her home school will be Nelson Academy, and then Paul Lehigh. In talking to my fellow parents and other members of the community, I am growing more and more concerned about the behavioral issues at Nelson, the middle school that my daughter will attend in six years. While six years may seem to be a long time away from her registration at Nelson, as a middle school teacher myself, I know that change takes time, and that's what I'm here advocating for. As far as I can tell from the school website, Nelson Academy's website, they do not have a positive behavioral intervention system, or PBIS, in place. For those who are not familiar, maybe community members here, in a PBIS system, the bare minimum is school-wide expectations. These should be three to five sure, non-negotiable positive behaviors that the school site agrees upon. Students who meet these expectations need to have consistent, system-wide reinforcement, basically, like positive incentives to continue that positive behavior. And then students that stray away from these expectations should be met with fair, multi-tiered interventions that curb and prevent these behaviors in the future. This type of system shows students that all behaviors, desirable and undesirable, have consequences. We do a disservice to our students and our community when we do not make these expectations clear and do not back them up with action. And this is exactly what I believe is happening at Nelson Academy. According to the Long Beach Unified School District website, quote, "All schools in LBUSD are implementing school-wide PBIS. Each school is unique and will therefore be at different phases of the implementation process," end quote. While I agree that all school sites are unique, I do believe it is the responsibility of the school district and the school board to ensure that schools are implementing the system with fidelity. I am not here to blame the teachers, and I am definitely not blaming the students. I am just merely bringing to light the fact that there seems to be a lack of a PBIS framework at Nelson, and it's creating some preventable issues that really hurt the school culture, hurt the students, hurt the staff, and therefore hurts my community and my neighborhood. I am not a representative or employee for PBIS. I'm going to put that out there. So I don't have any incentive other than my own community and my own family. I am a concerned resident. I'm a concerned parent that understands the benefits of such a system. And as a teacher in a middle school that successfully implements PBIS with students who are historically marginalized, and they carry very socioeconomic burdens, I have seen PBIS work firsthand, and I want it to work for Nelson. I want it to work for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Jaclyn Chavez.
Hi. I have a sixth grader, well, soon to be seventh grader, and a soon to be fifth grader. And I'm here to talk about math, math engagement, and specifically, middle school math course placement recommendations. I've been talking about math all year long till I'm blue in the face, and it came as such a surprise to me that these recommendations were changed, with no information, no engagement out there. We were really sold a story on why the math accelerated in middle school was happening, and I really was skeptical of it when I had a fifth grader going into sixth grader who also has a disability, a learning disability, in math. She has dyscalculia. So my anxiety was out here. So I really wanted to understand why those choices were made, and it turns out there was a lot of information out there. I found an article in the Signal Hill Tribune that quoted Dr. Brown. And so then I went and looked at the board meetings to see why it was, and, you know, skeptical. My daughter had a great year. She has progressed more than she ever has. But then now, right before the S-Back, she learned in class, you know, she was told, if you do not exceed, you will not go into the Accelerated Math 7 course, right? She got an A. She got a B her first semester. She got an A now. And so I was like, wait a minute. I've been talking about S-Back 2 because it's her first year taking it. I had great discussions. I will say that she has an amazing team. She goes to an amazing school where they welcome this engagement. And the really difficult part is it really seems to be at the district level. So the first weekend in June, I was looking at the website, and I found the recommendations, and apparently, they were still outdated. So then I spoke to one of the curriculum coaches in the math department. You know, we had a really good discussion. She was unaware they were still there. I just checked today, so three things there were removed, where the recommendations were removed, the board goals were removed, the board goal requirements for college still are there, but they still haven't updated them. And if you look at the course descriptions, it still actually says that if you can complete the Accelerated Math 6 successfully, you'll go to the Accelerated Math 7. So, hey, maybe the change in math is great. Maybe it's where she's supposed to be. She got a little notice the second to the last day with just her S-Back score and saying she would go into the regular Math 7. You know, this really hurts students with disabilities, in particular, students who have working memory challenges when they're taking the S-Back, students who have math goals as well. It really speaks to just not understanding and having that communication between the departments. Okay, my time's up.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Jerleene Tatum.
Good evening. Jerleene Tatum, LBUSD parent. A few days ago, I received an email and a text message regarding the opportunity to take a tour of the Center of Black Student Excellence. This is what it reads. "This summer, we warmly invite you to visit the Center of Black Student Excellence for a tour. Come explore this dynamic new space built to affirm, uplift, celebrate black identity, culture, and achievement," and attached as a flyer. And then it goes on, it gives the hours of Tuesday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then a phone number to call. It says, "Bring your family and learn more about the center's mission, upcoming events, and opportunities to stay connected. No appointment is necessary." So first question, how are people going to show up when the gates are locked? And why are we having a tour of a facility that only has, what is it, three offices, a lounge area, and a gathering area? Why is the center not being utilized to help, what do you talk about, close that achievement gap for black students? From what I've discovered, eight staff members have now been hired for that center. A director, who I've been told has no job description, is over that center. So we are inviting people to come to a center to learn about a mission that should be posted on the Long Beach Unified School District's website, that has no plan, a bunch of staff, is not open, although, I mean, Dr. Lovett's office is amazing, and her books, I could stand there all day. I wouldn't need a tour if I could just go hang out in there. But this is a problem. So this is the commitment that Long Beach Unified is making to black students. We open a center, but it's not open? Why aren't workshops being held there? Why isn't this time being taken as an opportunity to engage with parents, to do all the things that you all, the Board, says that you want to happen for black students? And the fact that there's eight staff members? How much money is that costing over the next, what is it, 100 days of summer for that facility to not be open and available to the community? So I just find it really problematic and almost insulting that we are being invited for a tour. It's beautiful. I guess we can all go look at the wonderful, beautiful furniture, because that's the only thing that is worth looking at in there right now.
Thank you. And we have no more speakers. I'm just...
That's no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is reports on superintendent advisory groups. We'll start with the business budget and policy development.
No updates to report on today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, instruction and student learning supports.
No report tonight.
Workforce development.
Unfortunately, I have no report tonight.
And student outcome-focused governance.
I have a really long report. Actually, you'll get it in the course of this meeting, because we have three agenda items, approval of goals with annual targets, approval of a monitoring calendar, and approval of the implementation timeline, and that will be discussed later under new business.
Thank you. I will just mention that today, we have our coach, Mr. Greg Klein, with us, and he has made an offer to the Board, and I'm just going to reiterate that offer, of a two-day training. So if... So if there's a board member who hasn't attended the training but would like to, that offer still stands and we can discuss that more, but I just wanted to make sure that the offer was reiterated again tonight. So next, we will go to the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Item 14.1, approval of the minutes for the April 9th, so a couple of months ago, the minutes for April 9th. I arrived, the minutes state that I arrived at 5:04 to this meeting, and it is true, I was in the restroom at that time. I want to point out that while I'd already been here at a previous meeting, and this was noted on the minutes, but when my colleagues arrive late, it's not noted. And in fact, I've actually mentioned to the board president that I'd like to have some grace there and also wait for me, like you do with everyone else, for me to arrive to the meeting before we take roll call. So I like that, I know that there's already a motion, but I like that modification made in the minutes, that I was present, I was in the restroom, and I had, as per item 3.1 of the minutes, I voted during closed session, further confirming that I was present. I also like to point out that on number six of the minutes, the word "student" is misspelled. And then also, I suggested last meeting, that public comment should have at least a sentence. The public takes their time to come and give us a comment, and I believe it may be because they want their comment on record. But when the minutes read something like Ryan Dennis spoke regarding special education, or Dr. Kim Tabari spoke regarding the Black Student Achievement Initiative, I think, I believe that their comment as to really why they're here is not really reflected in the minutes. So I like that correction. And on item 14.6, I do want to acknowledge Loos PTA, Newcomes Academy Foundation, and Prisk's PTA for the donations that they made to their schools. Loos PTA donated $77,500. Newcom Academy's Foundation donated $142,230. And Prisk's PTA donated $66,000. And I think this is great, the great work that these parents are doing, and then I hope we can replicate this in other schools across the district. And then on item 14.6, we are approving settlement claims under $50,000. And I'd like to ask that as these claims are being settled, if we can get a list of them, so that the board receives what settlements are being, or what claims are being settled for this year and if we can get one for last year. On item 14.10, Proposition 30 was approved by voters in 2012 and was extended to the end of 2030, and it's generating an estimate of $121,253,919 for the 25-26 school year. And LBUSD is using these funds for related instruction. And I'd just like to clarify what's included under general administration and other outgo in that line, where the over $121 million is being spent.
The district is using the entirety of it for portion of our teacher's salary. There's nothing for admin, because it's not allowed technically. It's only supposed to be used for instructional purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the consent calendar?
Just clarification, Board Member Lopez, do you want to amend the motion regarding the approval of the minutes, or what is the recommendation?
I just want that noted on the minutes, that I was present, because we had already met. We'd met during closed session, but from upstairs to here, I made a restroom stop.
I will ask our legal counsel to take a roll call vote.
Is the vote just with the adjustment of what Ms. Lopez just indicated?
The adjustment of the minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Was there a motion?
There was a motion to amend, but I didn't hear a second.
Second.
So we had a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. This was part of the discussion. So my question is, are we amending the original motion to include the correction of minutes?
That's on the table now, to amend the original motion to include the correction on the minutes. So you would need to vote on the correction on the minutes for Ms. Lopez being present. Vote on that piece to amend the original motion, and then you can take a vote on the original motion.
Just point of clarification, we have a motion. We can't add another motion for that motion, Jeff. My understanding of...
You can add a subsidiary motion to amend the original motion, which is what's on the table.
But doesn't Mr. Otto, who made the original motion, have to agree with that?
Not if there's a second to amend. So now, that's the main motion, on a subsidiary motion, which modifies the main motion. If there's a second, then there's a vote on the subsidiary motion to modify the main motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the subsidiary motion where we are voting on changing the minutes?
Ms. Lopez, can you just clarify what you want them to read, so that we can have that on record, so that there's no other issue?
Sure. That I arrived to this meeting at 5:04 because I was in the restroom.
Okay.
In other words, I was here, and as per the minutes, you can see that I voted in closed session, so I was present. But the minutes do read that I was late to here.
Well, it reads the time period you came into the room, into the community, which is when the meeting starts, when the meeting, in this particular instance, started at 5:00. So that's just, the practice is to note when somebody comes in, because you weren't part of the roll call vote. So that's the reason it's noted as to when you came into the meeting, because on the roll call vote, you were not indicated as being present. And just a reminder about the minutes, or the purpose for the minutes, are really to document the actions taken by the board. They're not intended to be a verbatim recitation of what occurred during the meeting. We do have video that allows that. Just to go back to the comment just related to public speakers, practice has just been to identify the area in which the speaker is talking about, so that there's no editorialized by any member creating the minutes. It's really intended just to indicate what it was that they spoke about, not what they said. That's the purpose for the minutes. So with that, I think we need to take a vote on the subsidiary motion to amend the minutes to include that Ms. Lopez was present, or identify why she was late. So I will, do you want to take a roll call vote for that?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Lopez?
Aye.
Vice President Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member O'Royall?
Aye.
Thank you. So that's amending the original motion, so now we just need to vote on the original motion, which is to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Well, do we need to approve the consent calendar as amended if we already voted on the amendment in the subsidiary?
You voted on the amendment to the consent calendar. Now you need to vote to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, so this motion includes that amendment?
That's still on the table and pending, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
So to be clear, we're voting on the consent calendar with the amendment to the minutes?
That's correct.
Any further discussion on that one? I'll have you take a roll call vote on this one as well.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Vice President Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student Member O'Royall?
Aye.
That passes 6-0.
Next on the agenda, we have new business, review of local indicators update and adoption of the 2025-2026 Local Control and Accountability Plan. And this is something that's come before us several times in the recent weeks, and so tonight is the final presentation before we vote. So welcome to our staff. Thank you for being with us. And I think they're just about ready, so we will give them the floor.
Good evening, board members, senior team, educational partners, and the community. Thank you for allowing us to present kind of the final details of the Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP, as well as the local indicators. So let me go ahead and show you the agenda for these next couple of minutes. So I will be presenting information about the local indicators of the LCAP. Afterwards, Dr. Salazar will provide a quick recap of our past few months with you, share the release of the superintendent's response to community feedback and comments, and then we'll recommend that the board approve and pass the New Year's plan. All right.
Can I just say, I'm so happy to see the props. So props for the props, yeah.
It's been a couple of years, right? So we shared in a past presentation that the LCAP meets two goals. One is to allow local agencies like our district to set their own goals, and the other is to make sure that these goals are connected to those broad state priorities. The LCAP must address these state priorities and show how it connects to our own goals. While some of these priorities are measured with data collected at the state level, some of this data is captured locally. So the next slides will illustrate the data collected to support the district's LCAP Here for the state priority tables, you can see data that's collected in support of the LCAP metrics. This chart shows which measures are collected by the state and which are collected locally. So for example, state priority one, basic learning conditions, credentialing data is collected and reported by the state, and this is measured and identified as metric 8.1 in the LCAP. Locally collected data, such as facility inspection results and student access to instructional materials, appear in other metrics that relate to basic learning conditions. So state priorities one, four through eight are collected by the state, and you can also see here, in addition to that, state priorities one through seven are collected at the local level. The LCAP has more measures than what's shown in these two slides, but what we've tried to do within the LCAP is for each metric table, provide you information of the data source in addition to the baseline and the recent outcomes. So we feel that adding measures beyond those that are required provides more data to help present a bigger picture of the LCAP and of the district. Here to present some final details of the LCAP is Dr. Salazar.
Thank you. Thank you, George. I don't have props. So good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Benitez, President Craighead, Ms. Lopez, Otto, Mr. Miller, and Board Member Alana. We're here as part of a team, and we're very excited to be here, to share the support of our educational partners so far. So following George's update on our local control indicators, we are honored to be able to present to you the Local Control Accountability Plan, commonly known as the LCAP. So we know that this document represents a culmination of months of engagement with our families, with our school sites, and with our community abroad. It's collaborative work, it's meaningful work, it speaks to the engagement of our students, families, and community members, and it reflects a shared document that really helps guide us in our programs and services, so that our students are not only academically achieving, but are also well taken care of with regard to their SEL, or social emotional learning. So the LCAP is not for us, just a compliance document. It's our community's roadmap, it helps us guide, and we know that it is based on the past presentations that we've been here for. We know that it's in alignment with our board goals, superintendent goals, but also Vision 2035. So tonight, we bring forward to you something that has been on our webpage before, and we had some feedback around it, and we were asked to maybe make it a little bit bigger. And so we've done that. But this is the action summary tool, and it's designed as a user-friendly resource for our community. It offers a condensed, more easy-to-read, if you will, overview of the full LCAP. And again, it's reformatted in larger print, based on some feedback we received. This tool provides a clear, at-a-glance snapshot of each goal. It includes associated actions for each goal, the number of metrics each goal may have, and the projected budget, not only for each action, but for the goal overall. So in our final draft that we are presenting for adoption tonight, what we are referring to as Draft 3 on the webpage, this summary tool is also included. And so both the Draft 3 and this budget summary tool includes the projected budget. They're both available and can be accessed by our public on our webpage on lschools.net/lcap. I'll give you a moment. So part of the LCAP development process, we are required to provide a written response from the superintendent, Dr. Baker, to the questions and comments we received throughout the engagement process. Specifically, our district English Learner Advisory Committee and our district Community Advisory Committee, both known as either DLEC or DCAK. But we also took in feedback from our broader community. And so this response, which is shown here as a snapshot or a screenshot, reflects the feedback we received throughout the engagement phase. There were questions and there were comments that were reviewed by our team, and then we were able to organize them into some themes. And so some of the themes are parent education. We had some questions and comments around, well, what tells more, or what else is available to parents by way of education or workshops? We also received an inquiry around restorative practices, how they were referred to. And then lastly, we also saw that there was questions regarding programming, specifically after-school, summer, or programming for parents for English as a second language or ESL. So the full written response is now posted on our webpage on lschools.net/lcap. And you can see copies of the written responses. And so what we've done on that document, you'll see, is that it's verbatim, taken how they were received by us as a team, and then Dr. Baker's response to each of those individual comments or questions. A copy of the written response will also be sent directly to members of DLEC and DCAK. And lastly, we're very proud, and not to be underestimated, is our webpage that we keep referring to throughout this process, because we strongly believe that it's a place for us to provide transparency in this process, to keep our community informed. And so again, we want to emphasize the value of this webpage as a central hub for all things related to LCAP within our district. So this website houses a comprehensive collection of resources that include all the drafts of the LCAP that we've been able to provide to the community and that we've provided to DLEC and to DCAK. Detailed tables, what we refer to as the LCAP tables, that include planned expenditures and contributing actions, and I look at the expert here, and some carryover tables specifically. But also the action summary tool, which I referred to earlier today, which simplifies or gives an overview of the programs and services within our LCAP document. You could also find all the presentations we've done here. You could also find all the presentations we've done to DCAK, to DLEC, and to the student RSVP group. And finally, uh, like I mentioned earlier, it's the written response to the, to our community that is also, um, located on that webpage. And so, our goal is to ensure that this is a page, uh, that is a resource for community, specifically our families, our students, but also our staff. We often, um, may have some staff that may not be fully, fully, um, aware of the LCAP, and so, that's a great place also for our staff to refer to, um, if they're seeking to not only understand, but also to engage in this process. And lastly, we're here to thank you for your leadership and for the ongoing support that you've shown the team and I, uh, throughout this process. And so, we know that your partnership has a, you know, you've walked alongside us, and you've been able to give us feedback, um, specifically on how to improve our engagement with our community, and so, we're thankful for that. We're also deeply grateful to our educational partners, right? So, our parent groups, the advocacy organizations that we've been able to engage with, individual students and families, uh, who have generously offered their time, their perspective, um, their input, uh, because we know that that's what been, that is what has been help, uh, helpful to us as a team as we, um, improve and/or redesign this LCAP for this coming year. Uh, we want to thank the staff that was able to provide input, uh, this year. Uh, they've been able to, because they are the closest to the work, they've been able to share with us not only what, what has been implemented, but also sharing how it's going, right? As well as where we are going. So, effectiveness and what are the plans for this coming year. And especially to our students who gave up of their time, uh, and shared with us their school experiences. And so, their voice always continues to guide us in our conversations and pushes us into some new thinking and new ways of being within our school district. I want to thank personally the team that is here with us, Carmen, George, Margaret, but also the guidance of Jim, who has been silently and in the background saying, don't forget this, don't forget that. [laughing] So, just a huge thank you to everyone involved. Um, and so, we bring back this flair as we make an official recommendation. And so, we respectfully request that the Board of Education for Long Beach Unified School District adopted twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school, um, school year, I'm sorry, the LCAP or Local Control Accountability Plan that we are referring to as Draft Three. And so, after tonight's approval, what is next, you might ask? All districts are required to submit, um, as part of the legal process, uh, to their county office of education. And so, for us, that would be the Los Angeles County of Education, known as LACO. And we have been in close communication with them throughout this whole writing process. And so, they've been able to give us along the way some suggestions and some edits that have been needed. And so, we, we expect that the same will be true once, um, once the board moves for adoption. And so, they will stay, they will remain in communication with us if there's anything that needs to be discussed further. Um, and so, I just say that to know that while this might be the last time you see us this year, uh, regarding LCAP, just know that we are in constant communication with LACO regarding any additional discussion that needs to be had. So, just thank you for your partnership, and thank you for the continued ways in which you are supporting this work.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I, I do love the fact that these letters light up, and that makes it very exciting. Um, and thank you for mentioning what goes on, um, next, what happens next, because, uh, I think that's good to know that, that our plan goes to the county, and they look it over, and then they can get back to us and let us know if there's anything else that's needed. I think that's a, um, important step for us to know about. So, do we have any, um, questions or comments? I know we've been...
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, I, uh, would note a couple of things. First, there, the, um, Local Control and Accountability Plan template, uh, that we got was a hundred and seventy-four pages, and I'm, thank you for not reading that. But, uh, uh, we also got the Local Control and Accountability Plan instructions, which were thirty pages that you also didn't read, but you well represented. But the observation that I'd like to make is that it seems like in the past, there's been a lot of controversy over what, what would, what would go on, and whether there was enough of this or that or whatnot. And this year, there were no people here to say, wait a minute, you didn't include this. And it's just a, a great example of making this work so that everybody, uh, felt content with it and, uh, and that we, that you've done a really good job. And in this day and age where what we're doing is, is trying to get the voice of the community, not only in our goals, but, uh, uh, but from our students, uh, this is a testimony to, to doing that very, very well. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar and the entire team. So, two, just, um, I guess clarification, uh, questions. So, Mr. Si, appreciate the top-level sort of overview of, um, uh, what the state priority was, what indicator we used, whether it was a state or a local indicator, and then the checkmark that we met. Where would one go if they were interested, uh, in seeing how we met, uh, you know, each of the, because, you know, whether it's chronic absenteeism, or graduation rate, or suspension rate? Uh, so, for the specific details, where would one go?
Thank you, Dr. Benitez, for the question. So, if you look in the LCAP, um, you'll see metric tables embedded within each of those goals, and so, you'll see the relevant metrics and action plans that are associated with each one. So, those baseline numbers and the more recent outcomes will be available there. Um, there are some that are still coming soon-
Correct.
-as we're trying to collect that information, um, but we will try and update that as soon as we can.
So, maybe, maybe, sorry, uh, thank you, Mr. Si. So, um, just a quick follow-up. So, if I was a, if I'm a community member and I'm interested in our, um, dropout rate, uh, so here in the slide presentation, you very, you know, importantly, uh, point to M seven point zero three. How would I know that that's, if I'm, if I'm interested in finding out where that? So, here we have it. How would I know where to go on the hundred-page document that Mr. Otto, uh, is, is referencing?
I don't know if we have the index or the link to that, Dr. Salazar?
So, I want to refer our community back. So, thank you for the question, because we always, we always want to make sure that our community knows where to go. So, the first thing I would say is go to our LCAP webpage. The second is I would refer them to our presentation, specifically the comprehensive slide deck-
Mm-hmm.
-which is interactive. Um, that slide deck provides not only all our actions, but it also speaks to our metrics. But if you want to see the actual metrics, it is, it will always be found within the LCAP document.
In, including like an index of what?
So, we follow the temp, I'm sorry, to cut you off. Uh, we follow the template provided by the state. Um, and so, inside the, the template, there's always a section for metrics for each of the goals. So, he referred earlier to eight point one, I believe. So, that would be eight, means it's the goal. So, eight, goal eight, you would go to goal eight, you would go to the metrics, and then you would find goal, um, metric eight point one. And it, we are required to report progress on each of the baseline.
Yeah, and, and, and maybe that's something for us to think about?
Mm-hmm.
I know that, what, out of compliance, what we're required-
Yeah.
-to, to provide, uh, but s- something where it's searchable, right? Because it, I would have to go into each priority area, as, as I'm understanding, right? And I, and I've seen the, the thing, right? So, it's there.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's, I'm just thinking of, kind of through, okay, how, how would I know which indicator to look at-
Yeah.
-and then which measure we're using to find out? I mean, I'm using examples because they're on the slide deck, right? Um, but, but it could be something else that I may be curious about or interested in. And so, maybe like the searchability, uh, of it, if we can sort of think, ne- next time around, um, i- is there, um, easier is not the best word, uh, right? But just a more accessible way, like if I want to know about this or that, yeah, a simpler, uh, way. Thank you.
I'm already, I've, we've got some ideas.
Yeah, and that's actually something we don't have to wait until next year.
Yes, exactly.
If there's a way to do that, then it's something we could explore this summer and the fall.
Absolutely.
Uh, and then related to that, again, just confirming accessible multilingualy to be able to do that as well, right?
Yes. Yeah, so, right now, currently, we have, we will have, as of tomorrow, all our documents for the, just this Draft Three in Spanish as well.
Thank you.
Some of them are already in Spanish there, but absolutely by tomorrow, by Friday, sorry. I keep thinking today's Thursday.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Benitez, I think what you're, um, asking for is, um, to make it more user-friendly so that, um, you don't have to read through the entire document to find if, if there's something in particular you're looking for. And I think it's, um, suggestions like that, that our staff really takes to heart, and I've, I've seen the process of listening and then taking action. Um, so, I think it's, uh, a wonderful suggestion, also because it keeps our community at, at the center of what we're doing and trying to provide information, and you've done such a lovely job with that. Um, are there any other, uh, questions or comments?
You know what? I did look into the, um, the, the, the other document, um, for, um, library education program, one point five, uh, seven million, sixty-seven thousand, twenty-six was allocated. And we have a thousand dollars per library for elementary school. Uh, middle and K eight is fifteen hundred dollars per library and two thousand dollars for high school libraries. Is that, out of the seven million dollars, just each library gets, just gets, gets a thousand, uh, at the elementary middle, and at the high school level, two thousand for books for the year?
All right. I have my expert here.
So, let me just pass it.
Or, or if there's anybody else, I welcome the team.
So, the, the, the library, um, budget that's allocated, that's the one in goal, one dot, one point five, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, majority of the seven million is actually in the, in the personnel, personnel area, because it includes the, our librarian costs, the salaries and, and stuff. So, uh, we actually have, uh, for non-personnel, it's, it's only about, uh, it's a smaller percentage, because, uh, for, for that goal, that's the, we, we actually have another allocation in the unrestricted that's not part of goal one point five.
So, we're spending about a thousand dollars, um, at the elementary, middle K eight, fifteen hundred, and two thousand dollars for the high schools. How much are we spending for library books?
Oh, um, I, I don't have it, uh, I don't have it in front of me. But normally for our library books, these are most, mostly for library supplies, your day-to-day, because library books, when we actually built out a library, we would purchase, we, it's part of the modernization of the library when we're purchasing books. Um, so, I don't, I don't have on top of my head how much that is. Sorry. We could get back to you on, on that one.
Uh, are there any further questions?
I just wanted to make a comment and just extend my appreciation for all the hard work that you all put into this, um, especially in the extensive work that you've put into making, uh, the community, um, and our parents and our students and everybody so included in this process. Um, I know you came to our, our RSVP group, and you gave a short little presentation and, um, and really wanted our feedback. And in something like this, that is so important to our district, um, I think it's, um, just thank you so much for making sure that everyone knows that you want their opinion and that they're extremely included in this. So, thank you.
Let me add to the gratitude of board member O'Royo, just by thanking you all for being such a strong team, from seeing things from multiple perspectives, the way that the four of you have interacted with some quiet support from Jim Suarez. Um, he can celebrate tonight, too. His retirement hours are finished for the year, right? And supporting you all. Um, and just to acknowledge, thank you, Dr. Salazar, for sharing about what comes next. It is, uh, it is usual and typical that when the county reviews an LCAP, there are non-substantive changes, and when those are made, I mean, we'll find typos and things that we want to, we want to clean up, and there may be some other non-substantive changes. As we did last year, we posted a, a little highlight, um, what has changed once it goes to, to LACO for that fine tuning. Um, and then if there was anything that was substantive, of course, we would come back to the board. So, in many ways, as Yumi and I have, over the last several years, described the budget season as it is ongoing and ongoing and ongoing while the LCAP sets the stage, there are things that get, um, adjusted during the year. So, thank you very much for your teamwork, um, to do the second year of a three-year LCAP. So, just also want to acknowledge that, important, that alignment that you saw to the board's goals. We will be able to do some fine tuning based on the board's decision about the, um, the targets that will be approved tonight, which will cause us to also go back to our LCAP and actually look at eliminating the district goals that stood separately. So, that will be, that will be ongoing work for us. So, thank you, and thank you, board.
I don't think it's been done, so move, move to approve LCAP, uh, for this year?
Aye. Yeah, I hope that shows up on, on, on camera. We'll give paparazzi a chance to capture this moment, but thank you very much. Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the, um, uh, adoption of district's budget. And, yeah, we, yeah, we're not going to let you go just yet. Um, and, and this also is a continuation of a conversation about the budget that we've been having for, uh, a few meetings now. So, whenever you're ready, we will, um, go into our conversation, our continuing conversation about the budget.
Yeah, we are asking you to approve the operating budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, note that the state is still going through its budget deliberations, and the federal budget discussions are still occurring, which could impact state, um, revenues as well as district revenues. And so, to the extent that there are material revisions to the revenues, um, that we'll be receiving next year, we'll be back, um, with some budget conversations and revisions. So, as Dr. Baker said, this is an ongoing conversation about the budget in a period that we would say is of uncertainty. So, we will be back, but, uh, the board is required to approve a budget before June thirtieth. So, we're asking you to do that this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yes, uh, Madam President, so, um, Ms. Takahashi, I know that some of these things we don't know, but, uh, given your history of being prepared, uh, and, and, um, in some ways forecasting, um, I want to speak specifically, um, to our, um, expected deficit spending, ongoing, right? Twenty-five, twenty-six, a year out, uh, over a hundred million, uh, as, uh, one of the, uh, table shows here, twenty-six, twenty-seven, year out, um, expected a hundred and twelve point three million deficit. And I want to speak specifically, if you could, uh, sort of elaborate and, and as, um, honestly as you're able to do, the implications of our federal funding, speaking here specifically of Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, which directly impacts our most underserved, our most vulnerable students, um, given that it seems that we'll, we're okay a year out. And by okay, we believe we're underfunded to begin with, uh, in these areas. But could you kind of walk us through what are, what is the impact on our budget and the implications of not having funding, uh, in these areas specifically, but with regards to our federal funding, uh, in general?
Yeah, so, when we're looking at the deficit, we're looking at unrestricted general fund. So, that is not the Title One, Title Two, Title Three budgets that we're talking about. We have assumed in the budget, um, uh, funding for Title One, um, because that does not seem to be, um, a subject of, of, um, conversations regarding, um, reductions at the federal level at this point. Um, federal, um, uh, sort, resources, Title Three, um, migrant education and adult education are, are, seem to be a subject of discussion. So, we have, we have included them in this budget. It's, it's a little over three million. And so, um, if that funding is reduced or eliminated, that would be, that would be an elimination or, uh, dra- dramatic reduction of services in those areas. Our, our, uh, deficit spending is when we're really talking about the unrestricted general fund, um, and that we, and what's important in that is that we don't have the funding to absorb programs, um, reductions in restricted funding such as Title One, Title Two, Title Three, um, other funding sources. We just don't have the bandwidth within our unrestricted general fund to begin to absorb, um, cuts that are happening in other areas.
So, just to confirm, uh, uh, again, Yumi, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth here, but if that restricted funding gets compromised in any way, we don't have the capacity or ability- we don't have the capacity or ability to use our unrestricted funds to cover uh that.
That's correct.
Because we're already in deficit spending even with the current amount of federal funding that we received from through our restricted funding.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. On the criteria and standards, uh number six A and six B, projected operating revenues, federal, other state, and other local are within the standard for the budget and two subsequent fiscal years. And then projected operating expenditures like books and supplies and services and other operating are within the standard for the budget and two subsequent fiscal years. And uh there's two marks on not met. Uh can uh you explain that?
Margaret, do you want to speak to the standard?
So for the for the federal uh for the federal revenue, um the the criterion and standard, uh it looks at certain trends and it gives you certain like allowable variances uh during for 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 the year. So the prior for the first prior year and the subsequent uh budget year, the reason why our federal funding has not met is because it's looking at the last prior years where we had S R funding. So when you have S R funding, what happens is that your federal revenue is artificially higher. So suddenly it disappeared. So the change is about uh a twelve percent, like in the criterion, it says twelve percent drop is because we suddenly lo- lost the feather the S R S R money that was there in the past few years. So that's a significant decrease. And then in twenty five, twenty six to twenty six, twenty seven, the drop is um out of our federal revenues that we reflected as part of twenty five, twenty six, part of it are carryover for the twenty five twenty four, twenty five um uh awards. We we have twenty seven months to spend most of federal awards, and we tried to spend it within that first fifteen fifteen months. But um but our twenty five, twenty six budget actually reflects um approximately a carryover of um a little over um a little over sixteen million. Most of it is Title One carryover that we're planning to spend during the summer and during the fall. So that's why in twenty five, twenty six, you have um ha- a slightly higher uh federal revenue, and then it drops back down to its normal um award allocation of about twenty eight million every year.
Thank you. And since you are talking about carryovers, um what are our carryovers within like all of our budgets put together for next year?
Um so the 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 most the the when I'm talking about carryovers, it's just that the uh federal.
Yes, 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 I understand that.
So uh so the federal carryover, in terms of revenue, awards that we did not spend for the general fund, it's about sixteen million. Uh for thirteen point one of that is Title One, and then um a small part of it is Title Two eh about one point three and about one point one is actually Title Three. That's why our Title Three is two point four. Our normal Title Three award is only one point three. So we have those carryover hitting, and the advice is to use it as soon as possible.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Um any other questions or comments on the budget? Did we have a motion yet? We did. Okay, and that was discussion. So um I believe we're ready to vote.
Actually, can I just uh add one more thing?
Yes.
We've had in the last uh two or three uh meetings, we've had um individuals coming up to talk about um concerns with the Block Student Center. Uh and I think uh since we are talking about budget, and then today someone else brought that up again, if we can, um and I wasn't sure this is where where I asked, but uh because this is, you know, we are budgeting, want to make sure that maybe we can have um someone from the center come in and and uh and speak to us, present to us what they're doing, um or maybe even add it to the agenda for for further discussion.
Okay, I believe we're ready to vote on the budget. In which case, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh that passes five zero with a preferential vote. So thank you very much. Once again, this is a culmination of so much work, and we are uh so happy to be taking care of this particular item of business. So thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Your first LBUSD approved budget. Congratulations. And really good work with you and your team. Thank you.
Yeah, well done, everyone. Well done. Next on the agenda, we have uh student outcome focused governance approval of goals with annual targets. So I will turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Yes, thank you. So tonight is a continuation of the conversation about the board's goals, bringing forward um the goals with their targets. In the last session, we did a working session that presented the goals themselves, the interim goals, which are actually the staff's interim goals. So tonight, we bring forward the complete package, if you will, the goals, and then you will see across each of the goals from the blue area um where you see the goal, the baseline, and the annual targets leading to the goals that the board has set. So we don't have a presentation to make tonight. Um appreciated the opportunity to interact with each of you in a um before today's board meeting, bringing forward your questions from the last working session that we did. And um I'm recommending approval of the board's goals with its targets that are also combined with the staff's interim goals and the staff's interim guardrails before you.
Dr. Baker, can I ask you and or a member of the team, um given that we had a three thirty uh meeting about monitoring, um to give us kind of a high level overview of two things? One is um how um the interim goals were developed, just process wise? And then um again, if you and or a member of the team could speak to how we arrived at the actual interim um targets, if you will.
Sure.
Um and 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 again, understanding that we don't, if 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 we're gonna, you know, try to reach that ultimate goal, um goal interim goals are not necessarily written. I'm gonna use an example. If we're gonna improve something by forty percent, they're not necessarily written nor thought of in a way where we're just gonna divide that by five over five years, all right? So just kind of the thinking as to how one, how goals were developed, interim goals, I'm sorry, because we have goals.
Yeah.
And then um how we arrived at the interim um target goals.
Yeah, I'll kick us off, and then I'll pass to Brian to um share some additional details. So one of the things, I think it was shared earlier, that when we think about our interim goals, we're thinking about what is predictive of success in meeting the goals that you have set. So just taking Goal One, for example, that um the percentage of grade three students who meet or exceed grade level standards on the state ELA, S P A C assessment, English Language Arts, Smarter Balanced Assessment, will grow from forty eight percent in June twenty twenty three to seventy percent. So our team looked at what we believe is most predictive of getting to that goal. Um our research team with Brian, with Hamina, with Dr. Madrigal, then helped to form the annual targets. And and I'll ask Brian to speak specifically because there's actually a theory of action behind the way that those targets are set. So we're not gonna get super down into the details about the numbers themselves, but there's really a theory behind them. When we think about sys- um persistence around the strategies that we're using, which actually that was a good conversation that I had with Greg after the workshop session on effective monitoring, thinking about how do you persist in strategies? For example, Goal One represents considerable professional learning experience for our teachers and a systematic different approach to teaching reading. Those assessments, those diagnostic assessments, as well as the interim assessments and formative assessments, are a way of our teachers, our principals, our district support team being able to check in on the implementation and the effect of that approach in teaching reading. Um and so when we think about getting to third grade, clearly you're not starting something in third grade. You're starting something when earliest point that we get students. Sometimes they're babies, often young students in pre-K, and then leading into the targets that have been set. So that's kind of a beginning point, and then you want to share about.
Yes, and I I absolutely want to channel Dr. Madrigal and her team. Um she part of even this evening, as we shift into a different approach to our um monitoring reports, we know it's not always gonna be staff from the research team who's gonna be sitting before us presenting. So tonight is kind of a transition into that. Um she's more than happy to be here, and and hopefully I will uh represent the work well. Um so when we look at the annual targets for the board goals themselves, and that's essentially what you all are voting on tonight, are the targets for the four board goals themselves. Um we we look at the baseline. So when when you all originally adopted your board goals, we had a baseline. And so if we look at Goal One, the baseline in twenty twenty three was forty eight percent of our third graders were reading proficiently on on that S P A C assessment. And the goal that you all set back a couple of years ago was that by twenty twenty eight, seventy percent of our third graders would be reading proficiently. So what we need to then figure out is along the way, what would be appropriate targets that we as a system should be setting on our journey to seventy percent at twenty twenty eight? And in our coaching with A.J. Crapill and and Greg and others that are supporting us, um we we know those two, there's kind of two ideas. One would be just a straight linear progression. You take the the gap between the baseline and the goal, twenty two percent in this case, you divide it by the five years, and you say it's about four and a quarter percent. That is a way, and it's actually a way that is not encouraged. It's discouraged because that's not how systems generally make progress. Uh the analogy that we've heard is this idea of kind of a hockey stick. And the idea with that is that if you can, if any of you who are Stanley Cup fans, uh last night we had the final. But um in a in a hockey stick, it's kind of a flat beginning, and then it kind of accelerates up pretty rapidly. And the idea is that in large system change, when you're bringing in new approaches, new professional development for our teachers, it takes some time for those initiatives and those strategies to actually result in improvement. So you'll notice in some of these cases, we have more of a hockey stick approach, shorter, smaller growth in the first couple of years, more accelerated growth in the latter years. Um in addition, Dr. Madrigal and her team looked at every one of our schools and looked at their multi-year progress over multiple years, looking retrospectively, to say what would be appropriate growth targets for each school with related to this goal, Goal One? And then kind of accumulated up, what would be if we accumulated up all of those fifty four elementary and T K schools, that's what we're talking about for Goal One, what would be appropriate targets? It's also looking at other factors, trying to in incorporate things like with declining enrollment and transitions and demographics. But there's a lot that goes into it. It's it is a science. It's probably not perfect. So these are targets that we hope to achieve. Um but the 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 idea is that it's not a linear progression, but it's actually taking into account that it will take, in some cases, more time for some of the um initiatives that we're in the strategies we're implementing to actually result in in that dramatic increase in performance we're looking for. So hopefully that's helpful, and that that plays out. It's it's not always the case. In some cases, like in Goal Three, you'll see the the gap closure is a linear progression as it played out for Goal Three. So each each goal, our research team took each um specific goal and identified to the best of their ability, what would be appropriate targets that we think you all should um, we would recommend for you to adopt that will help us on our on our journey towards the ultimate goal attainment in twenty twenty eight.
Thank you, uh uh Brian. So just just uh what what should I say? So it full transparency, when we had our one-on-one uh check-ins, um I am curious, I'm wondering, and I'm looking at Greg to see if I ask this quest this question effectively. Um for all of our go- goals, um we have a very specific subgroup population, whether we're calling them underserved or underachieving or underperforming, whatever the correct educational terminology is. And those also happen to be the subpopulations that the data shows that we are experiencing higher proportions of um uh with impacting our enrollment uh rates. So um they tend, our 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 decrease in enrollments tend to be from our socioeconomically disadvantaged uh students, our emerging bilingual uh students, our black students. Um and so a a wondering of mine is over the course of five years, and then I asked this of the team, all right? How do we take that into account? Because if our uh if the population of students that our goals are targeting are the ones that are experiencing higher decline in enrollments than the rest of the population, how do we account that uh right in our measures?
Yeah, I mean, and and when you brought that up the other day, I think that was a good question for our team. Ultimately, we know what we're striving for is the goal itself, the goal attainment by twenty twenty eight. And what we're talking about for the targets are our best interpretation of how we think we'll get there on the journey. Um that we, obviously, we can't predict if we will attain those exact numbers on the way. And there are gonna be factors. If we have increase, if we have accelerated uh decline in our um unduplicated count, and that is in certain schools and certain neighborhoods, obviously, that could change along the way. We know that some of our schools, um like some of our Title One schools, like a Lincoln Elementary, like a Holmes Elementary, traditionally are are well above kind of the average and are positive outliers. So if they had a significant decline at schools that are positive outliers, that could have a factor. We're we're never gonna be able to fully in for the purposes of setting these targets, fully factor all of those things. But those are each year, when we look back at the the data that's coming in, and and actually, as we look at the data along the way with the interim goals, we'll be able to make some of those adjustments. You'll see some of that reflection, uh some of that analysis along the way. Um but the research team at this point has is bringing to you all the targets with the best of their ability, trying to factor in as many different things as they can.
And and we, staff will be able to analyze at the school site level. So I I made reference earlier today to Mr. Samuels and Mr. Zaid working with principals, introducing a goal template that looks similar to this. So rather than monitoring and tracking in a way that's different, actually, they're setting up a system from the boardroom to the classroom in terms of monitoring. So there will be site level. It it's not what the board is asking for a report out on, but it will be the way that we ensure that every school is making progress towards the board's goals, because that's how we'll reach the goals.
And we do think it's realistic. Uh we had a two-point growth uh um from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Um and then from twenty twenty seven to twenty twenty eight, we anticipated twelve-point um growth. Is that uh do we believe that that's pretty realistic?
You're referencing Board Goal One?
Goal goal, uh I'm sorry, Goal Two.
Board Goal Two. So Board Goal Two and Board Goal One, we know that they're tied together. Um Board Goal, let me just start with Board Goal One as an example. Board Goal One is about third grade proficiency. We have done some very extensive, intensive training out of our um Office of Curriculum Instruction professional for our kindergarten through second grade teachers around structured literacy. Now that training is shifting up to our grade three, five teachers this summer. Those students that will be uh that we're we'll be measuring in twenty twenty eight in third grade, they're currently, they just finished their kindergarten year. And so we do expect that as those students go through multiple years of classrooms with teachers who have been highly trained, that by the time they're into second or third grade, we will see acceleration, strong acceleration in their proficiency that may not be there yet. So it look may look like that's that hockey stick analogy. There might be small gains now that we are anticipating will accelerate. Now, as as to Goal Two, Goal Two then is talking about for the students who are not proficient, how will we accelerate? If we're achieving Goal One the way we want, we're actually gonna have fewer and fewer students that are falling into the not met band in Goal Two. So they're they're kind of almost inversely related. Um it is, you're right, yeah, for Board Goal Two, the growth from twenty twenty seven to twenty eight is uh predicted to be extensive in order to achieve that goal. We believe that is our our best approach at this point. And then we'll continue to monitor that over the next couple of years and see if that if we are on track. As as you heard Greg mention earlier, as we're presenting the monitoring reports, we'll collectively make the determination, are we on track? If not, what are we working, what are we doing to try to get back on track or to accelerate that? But that is our our collective um best belief on what what are appropriate targets at this point.
On uh Goal Two, reading acceleration, uh two C, we are voting on to be determined number of students in grade six, eight who will meet or exceed grade level standard. Uh on E L A, common assessments up from to be determined in June twenty twenty six. Uh can I ask why we don't, we didn't fill in the to be determined?
So so actually, you're but you're voting on each where the blue band is right below the goal statement. So Goal Two, just where you see the percentage of students in grade four, going across. So goal two, just where you see the percentage of students in grade four, going across to the right. The interim goals don't require a, a board vote. They're, they're the way that we are monitoring improvement and we'll need to assess the baseline for that.
And yes, I just, I will point out, because it, it happens throughout the interims. The interims, which are not the board's vote, as Dr. Baker just said, in some cases, they are new assessments that we're just bringing in. So we don't have metrics to say what the baseline is. But again, that, that's for staff to, to monitor and bring back to you all as part of the monitoring reports going forward. But you will see in a few places in a or baseline, because these are things that we are bringing in new to our system because we think they are, they will be highly correlated to the goals themselves.
I just want to make a comment with the, in terms of the interim guardrails, I think it's a great start. I just want to make sure that we understand that just what we have does not guarantee that resources are being equitably allocated, that district-wide initiatives are meaningfully engaging students of color and their families or that curriculum adoption process are fully aligned with our commitments to educational and racial equity. So, so I think that this is, it's a good start, what we have, but, but also to point out that that's just not all that we're accounted, accountable for.
Thanks for allowing me to just illuminate that. We, in the coaching that we receive from Greg Klein and from others, part of the struggle in terms of the guardrails is that we can't represent the entire guardrail. And so we tried out some things. For example, we tried out the idea of under equitable resourcing. If we were to say that we would implement the entire L cap because of the way that it's written with all students in mind and then subgroups of students and the goals for them. However, the guidance, the coaching was to not look at something that is compliance, but look at things that illuminate the guardrail itself. So point well taken. We picked a few things, or we picked five things that we thought in these guardrails would show the, the work that we're doing out in the district that would give an example or a proxy for, that are in the L cap or in other plans so that we have an opportunity to share with you the results of those, those aspects of our work.
Do we have any other questions or comments? So we need a motion to approve the annual targets.
Move to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes five zero with a preferential vote. And thank you very much to staff. This is a, a, a huge lift. This was not an easy task because there were so many, so many factors that went into this process. I know it was very time-consuming. There was so much data. Thank you for every, I know, I know the senior staff that sits here represents so many more people that actually provide the information and get us to this point where we can have these. So it, it's very, it's very nicely laid out where we have things, you know, in a presentation, a PowerPoint or whatever. So much work goes into this. So I just want to thank everybody for their contributions.
Thank you. I just want to add to that. The Research and Student Outcomes Office, and they have actually changed their name to be supportive of the board's work in terms of student outcomes. We could not do this without them. Eric and Diana have had an opportunity in a weekly implementation team meeting to interact with Dr. Madrigal and Amina Lalani. So to see the behind the scenes things that they've been working on with their teams to get us to this point. So just tremendous expression of gratitude for their expertise and the pride they take in, in the work in serving the Board of Education and also thinking about how then to turn this to the schools and be supportive of our schools and reaching their individual goals so that we reach our board goals.
And I just wanted to piggyback on that because that is a very good point in regards to just the great work that Amina, Veronica and my main man Brian have done behind the scenes. I know I had, like a number of our, our board members, had some questions around the targets. And I too had to take a step back, understanding our role in the 50,000-foot approach that we should take in regards to the decision-making. But all things considered, I just appreciate how your team, Brian included, how you always made it plain for us in those meetings. And so obviously we'll continue to have the conversations, but keeping it plain so that not only we, who were not as deep in the weeds and the intricacies of our district's functionality, we're not that deep in the weeds. All things considered, you made it very simple for us to understand. But more importantly, that is the same language that we will use when we're doing our community outreach so that we too can make it just as plain so that they can understand where we are as a district. So I just wanted to commend you and your team for all of that great work because I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the monitoring calendar and
We haven't voted.
We haven't, we haven't voted?
I don't think we voted on that.
No, we did. Yeah.
Sorry. I can't remember voting.
Oh, well, yeah. I just wanted to mention that we had a workshop this afternoon from 3:30 to 4:30 and we talked about the monitoring calendar and we talked about monitoring in general. So that's next on the agenda. Dr. Baker, do you want to start us out?
Sure, I can just introduce the item and actually reinforce that the way that we're talking about goals, the targets, the interim goals, the guardrails and a monitoring calendar, it's been, it's been a long time coming and a lot of work for the board as well. And to me, it represents really exceptional governance practices. When you're thinking about the expertise of a research office and education leadership staff, thinking about budget that goes into it. I mean, this is, is really good example of everybody involved in some way in getting to this point. So just appreciating that. Well, you checked off the list this afternoon with Greg around what a monitoring calendar should have in it. So I recommend approval of the July 2025 to June 2028 progress monitoring calendar for the Long Beach Unified School Board Goals and Guardrails.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just want to lift up something that was clarified in our earlier discussion today. Really, the monitoring reports are the way that we hold ourselves accountable to achieving these goals and along the way interim goals. So to me, I think it's important to highlight, particularly for, for our entire LBUSD team, teachers, principals, but, but as well for our communities. If we don't get the data that we need in these monitoring reports and we're not seeing potentially what we need to be seeing in advancing the goals and there's a superintendent, if we're not seeing it, doesn't have a plan for us, then we were reminded today and we affirmed, we don't vote to accept the report, right? Until we either see what our interim goals are, are, are highlighting and/or our superintendent has a plan, right? Either to pivot or shift or whatever we, so I, I think it's important to highlight that the monitoring report is one thing. Us approving to accept the monitoring report is our way of holding ourselves accountable. So I appreciated that conversation from earlier today. And, and again, it's a testament to the heavy lift that Dr. Baker just expressed. It's necessary for the entire system to, to advance on these goals. So we, we will have those opportunities if we approve this monitoring calendar, the progress monitoring reports tonight to be able to hold ourselves accountable to these goals.
On the Communication and Collaboration section of the timeline, redesigning the board's meeting agenda and calendar to be student outcome focused. I firmly believe that we should be, this should be one of our main focuses, but also believe it can limit the board from addressing other important matters such as safety, budget or facilities, just to name a few. I just recently requested two items added to the agenda. I asked that if we could speak about derogatory language, policy maybe in schools and the school of choice process. And I was reminded that this is, anything on the agenda has to be student outcome focused as per what we, what we've already approved. I insist that both of these items are impact student outcomes and, and so I have reservations on us not being able to bring some other matters to the table for discussion because I do believe that, again, there's other items that are critical in impacting student outcomes. Also, on the continuous improvement, create and facilitate opportunities for other members of LBUSD community, which includes
You know, I, we're, we're voting on the monitoring
Point five, the implementation of the timeline?
No, we're, we're voting on 15.4.
Okay, now leave those, I'll come back to them at 15.5. I thought we were at 15.5.
Oh, no, this is the monitoring calendar. Okay. Any discussion on the adoption of the monitoring calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes five zero with a preferential vote.
If I may, Madam Chair, first of all, thank you both for, for proving that with the work that Mr. Zaid, Mr. Samuels, what we're doing with principals. This is really going to have a long-term impact and we're excited to see what, what this will become as we really start to dive deeply into these different areas. So that's the most important, the impact it's going to have on our students. But I'm also excited for the next time you all do your self-assessment because we're going to get some points based on what we did tonight.
Well, thank you very much because a lot of the work that has gone into the last few board meetings will, will really get us to some progress on that self-evaluation.
Get us on the board.
Yeah. Okay. So next on the agenda, we have item 15.5, our student outcome focus governance implementation timeline. And the item up for discussion is our community engagement plan. So that's what we'll be discussing. So community outreach plan. This is, this is our second look. The first review was at our last board meeting and so we're taking another look at that to be approved tonight. So Ms. Lopez, did you want to address the community outreach plan?
Move to approve community outreach plan component of our timeline.
Second?
Discussion.
Okay. And just for clarification for the public, I just want to, it's really easy to be back here and confuse what we are talking about. I just want to show the public what we get for us. And we get it in a week and we will be talking next item about the bylaws where we want to ask questions. We're asked to ask questions before, but I do want to show what we are expected to read. And I do happen to read all of my, my documents.
The public gets the same packet.
With that, again, on the timeline, we, on Communication and Collaboration, redesigning the board's meeting agenda and calendar to be student outcome focused. Again, I think it's, it's critical, important, but I also think we need more time to address other important matters in our board meetings. And, and I think that we are limited. On continuous improvement, create and facilitate opportunities for other board members of the LBUSD community, including potential candidates for board service to learn about student-focused governance. I think this may give, and I've said it before, some candidates an unfair advantage. And I believe that we should remain neutral if we want to avoid, avoid any perception of being biased.
You know, if I, if I can, on that one, we've, we've talked about how that's not a training for campaigns or any of that type of thing, but it's a training on student outcome focused governance. It's how we've implemented the student outcome focused governance approach.
I understand. For me, it's a language that's in the timeline. And also I have on the community outreach plan, I am scheduled to be the first board member to hold a community meeting on a bi, on the bi-monthly cycle. I was never asked my availability in August and my availability is limited. And I also believe it should be actually the board president who should be the first one, the most experienced person on the board. And, and so I, I have, I have conflict there and I would have liked to have been asked if August was a good month for me. So the timeline includes also adoption of bylaws that I firmly oppose. And therefore my vote will reflect this.
I, I did want to piggyback on Ms. Lopez's comments because I too just wanted to confirm a correction that we talked about at the last board meeting that I see didn't change in regards to the notes here. So at the last board meeting, because we too talked about needing more time to, to roll out our outreach plan, technically our first bi-weekly, I mean, bi-monthly outreach activity wouldn't happen until October of 2025. And so once again, it only went in numerical order. Obviously, we want to appease the availability of each board member. But to that, I want to make sure that the records reflect that, at least from a notes perspective, we initially said that District One would occur in October of 2025. District Two would happen in January of 2026. District Three would happen in March of 2026. District Four would happen in May of 2026. And District Five would happen in August of 2026.
What's up for vote is August. If you look at, if you, if you go to our, to our document, what's up for vote starts in August.
Correct. I'm telling you, I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying that there was a correction that we talked about at the last board meeting that I asked that'd be reflected here and I recognize that it's not here.
And, and also at the last meeting, we talked about the time allocation for each of the engagement events to be changed from one hour to 90 minutes. And, and this particular copy doesn't reflect that change either. But this is
A question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
My, my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that it wouldn't just be one board member and that it would be board members not from that area?
Yes.
In those districts? So the districts are there just as which district is being engaged with?
Yes.
Versus it's not necessarily identifying which board members would be present for those meetings? Is that still?
Yes, that, yeah, that is still correct. Ms. Lopez, if you want us to change that arrangement, if you'd rather start with the fifth district and we're, I mean, we can certainly discuss that.
I would appreciate that because again, this document just indicate District One, board member District One, board member District Two. And I was the first one in this document is August. So I think that you being the president would be, and the longest standing board member, the first one to, to model that for us.
And I'm, I'm fine with that. Do we want to make that adjustment in the
Yeah, I want to speak to that. We can make the adjustment. I mean, that's not the issue. I want to be clear that this is not based on the person or the location of where they are in the city. This was literally broken down by numerical value, I mean, broken down in sequential order. And to that, as outlined in this document, is that the information that is presented in District One, in all honesty, should be very close, if not identical, to the information that's going to be presented in District Five all the way through the entire year. And so though I do not want to put anybody in a, a difficult position in regards to their personal calendar or their work calendar, once again, from this design and my proposal, I understand why you would want to move. But I just wanted to make sure that from a principal component, that you didn't think that this was looking at Maria because this is absolutely was not.
I never said that. So I, I appreciate that, that clarification. But no, I initially brought it up because I felt if I'm going to be asked to present something in August, like my availability may be limited. And so, so I wanted to make sure that I was also public about it because I don't want any misunderstandings. But it, you know, October, October is good. However, I would appreciate our board president, who's more experienced, leading the way.
Well, I would be happy to accompany Well, I would be happy to accompany you and be your partner in October for that meeting.
And then, just for clarification, I have no problem leading meetings. I just, this is new, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so it seems like we're good with that arrangement, with starting with the 1st district and going down to the 5th district. But I would also like to remind us that it would be for a 90-minute, oh, you have that change? Okay. So remind me, did we have a motion?
I do have a question for legal. So this question's for legal counsel, because this is just a one item, and I think I know my answer, but I do have, just the timeline in itself, I have, I, there are a lot of bylaw elements in the timeline, and so I don't believe that I can vote on just, on this, the sessions, and then everything else.
The timeline is not up for approval on vote tonight. So what's up, right, the motion, the timeline is, has been approved previously. It's just a standing item in case there are modifications, so that's already been voted on. I think what's up for tonight, right now, is on the calendar, not the calendar, but-
Community Engagement Plan. We do, we do-
15.5, that's what we're voting on, right?
Yes.
Okay, if I'm reading correctly, it says Student Outcome Focused Governance, Approval of Implementation Timeline.
Correct. And the discussion by the board is that they're not taking the implementation timeline. The quarterly approval will come in July, so this is, the timeline is a standing agenda item. Right now, the discussion that the board has related to the Community Outreach Plan. At least, that's the motion that's on the table.
I'm happy to take notes, though. The implementation team that Mrs. Craighead and Mr. Miller attend meets weekly, and so anything that you want to suggest, I'll take, I'll put it in the notes that you'll have access to as well, so that when you get to a point at the quarterly self-evaluation, that may be a time to adjust the timeline, depending on how far we've gotten and how many items are still in the area of need.
I'll add one, Dr. Baker, in case we didn't pick it up in our earlier meeting, and for our community members that are watching right now as well. So I'm not interpreting this Community Engagement Plan as the only way that our board will engage with community. I don't think any of my colleagues are interpreting that way either. But I do want to lift up, part of our discussion earlier today, and it's implicitly embedded in the Community Engagement Plan, if not explicitly here, is that we cannot expect for our community members to either get information on, or provide input on, or be trained on work that it's taking us years to do, right? So the 90 minutes, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, are not designed for someone to get there and in 90 minutes, learn, understand, provide feedback and input, or for us to listen and learn from them, because we do have monitoring reports that we just approved. Those need to be shared and disseminated. So I want to lift up that this is one component of our engagement with communities, not mutually exclusive, that some of these things, some of what will be shared, needs to be, and here's where we get back to guardrails, right, needs to be disseminated in, provided feedback to, on an ongoing basis anyway. So particularly the monitoring report component, I do have reservations that if we try to do too much in these 90 minutes. So I would also say contingent, the approval of the night, now that we're expanding to 90 minutes, I think we need to approve what scripts we're going to use, what we're allocating time to, in the spirit of engaging our communities, that we don't try to put everything in these 90-minute meetings across this upcoming calendar year. And so part of my ask, Dr. Baker's in your notes, that we're also explicitly thinking through and providing concrete additional spaces to engage with our communities and to share information and to receive a feedback.
Yeah, that's good. There are also, I will put that in the notes, and this also doesn't keep a board member from doing a town hall. I know we've had, with each of you, I've had interaction on topics that are of importance to you, about partnering with city council people to, on items that actually cross boundaries in terms of education jurisdiction and city jurisdiction. All of that still can continue. This is specific to the vision and the values of the community, and that ongoing nature of what it means to have goals and guardrails, and report to the community about the progress of those goals and guardrails.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Are we ready to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
That passes 4 with 1 preferential vote and 1 abstention. So next on the agenda, we will be discussing board bylaws. I do want to mention that we have Greg Klein here to help if we need it, and in Mr. Strumfer's absence, but I think we can jump right in to a discussion, and we will start with bylaw number 9005. One moment, let me get there. Yeah, 9005. So in our packets, we have the draft bylaw, we have a copy of the bylaw with a red line, and then a cleaner version. So do we have a motion to accept the bylaw as presented?
Move for approval?
Second contingent, this, Madam Chair, just so that we all know which copies we're working off of here. So the copies that you just said that we have, the first copy is that draft with no edits or suggestions on it. The second is the copy with suggested edits and revisions. And the third, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right copies here, is the final clean copy that includes those edits and revisions?
Yes.
And so we're actually, the discussion is based on, with supporting documentation, that third copy of that bylaw, correct?
Yes.
The final, what I'm calling the final recommended version.
Right, right. So you did second that, and so now we're discussing-
Yes, contingent of that, yes.
Yes, so now we're discussing that. So we are discussing that third iteration, and if anybody has a question or comment or concern about the red-lined version, or any other copies, one of the reasons that we have a grouping of three tonight was because they had very few edits in this process of going through the bylaws. Ms. Lopez, did you have something on this bylaw?
Actually, on the, so I want to start with the background information. On December 7th, the board held a retreat. The background information states that we held a study session, but we called it a retreat, so I wanted to correct that. On Board Bylaw 9012-
Actually, we're just discussing 9005.
Oh, go right ahead. The background, I think that that's before the 905, so I don't have any questions on 9005.
Okay, is there any other discussion on 9005? Okay. In that case, we will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0 with a preferential vote. So that was 9005, and now we will move on to 9012. 9012 starts with a copy in red, and then the next page has edits, and then the third page, yeah, the third page is the unedited final copy, if you will. And so that's what I'd like a motion on for 9012.
Move for approval?
Second.
Is there any discussion on bylaw 9012?
Yes, Madam Chair, 2 items that I'd like legal advice here. So in Section 1, for general comments or feedback, the board member will, letter D, how are we defining impartial, and how are we defining complaints? So for instance, if I'm interpreting this as formal complaints, whether those are UCPs or formal, you know, HR complaint or something, I understand the importance because of due process, right, of remaining impartial. But if it's someone, you know, that went over in meetings or in a space that's, for lack of a better word, complaining about a policy that we voted on and I believe in, I'm not going to be impartial about it, nor do I believe we should be expected to be impartial. So if we could either explain what we mean by complaint, and if we're talking about formal complaints, that I completely understand the neutrality and impartiality, but we don't have, like, a specific definition here of what complaints are, and it could be misconstrued as anyone can tell us anything, or say anything, or complain about anything, and we can't say anything about it or have an opinion about it.
Would it be helpful if we added the word "formal" in front of complaint?
And I guess that's my question for legal, Ms. Craighead, because I don't know then what constitutes, or then what we're using to define what a formal complaint is.
I see.
So I, just in response, I think that the complaints can be both formal complaints that you would want to move on, that would fall under the Uniform Complaint Procedure process, or complaints against district employees process under board policy. Those would be more formal complaints against either something that falls under the UCP or a complaint against a district employee. I think the intent, I would comment, I think the intent here is that if the complaint should be addressed as an operational issue under the superintendent, those issues should be referred to the school district, or to the staff or superintendent for addressing those specific complaints, if it relates to things that are operational under the jurisdiction of the superintendent. That's how I would frame that question. If it's general complaints about policy, things that are within the board's purview, then I think those are different, that wouldn't necessarily be moved on, because those are things that would fall under the board's jurisdiction.
So can we add that language, then?
So I was thinking the same thing that you were thinking, and I was saying that it would read, D would be, board members will remain impartial, both verbally and written, regarding formal complaints at times they are made. Does that satisfy the spirit of your concern?
Well, I think we're still getting at, we need a definition, or we need some parameters on what we're defining as formal, right? And I don't think we have to say written or verbal, because if it's a formal complaint, as Jeff just pointed out, it's something operational, then yes, we shouldn't be, before due process, having a public opinion about it.
So the idea about due process is that if a complaint comes in under UCP, complaint against the district, that goes through our process for investigation, that may ultimately come back up to the board for approval at some point, or review at some point, that's the purpose for remaining impartial, and not necessarily commenting on those complaints, and referring it over to the appropriate staff member or to the superintendent for addressing.
So do you think, Jeff, adding "formal complaint" is specific enough to cover that?
I mean, well, I'll leave that up to you. I think it does cover formal complaints, complaints under UCP. I don't think you want to specify necessarily just complaints under UCP or complaints against district personnel. It would really be complaints that were coming in against the district. Some of those may not fall under UCP or complaints against district employees. They may be complaints that should be handled and referred to, to district staff for addressing. So I'm not sure how to capture that. At least, that's the intent, I think.
And again, just, if we're wordsmithing here, so if we add that phrase-
Yeah.
-complaints that fall under the purview or jurisdiction of the superintendent and our staff.
Yeah, that could be added, to clarify that.
Do we need the language to that sentence, "at the time they are made"?
I would argue that we don't.
I would agree, yes.
Right.
Are you suggesting that we have it, or are you asking the question, Mr. Otto?
No, I'm suggesting that we eliminate it. I don't see the purpose of it. I think it's confusing.
I get you. So to confirm, I'm sorry to cut you off here, but I just want to make sure that I have my edits that I think are still probably going to be edited correct. And so right now, D reads, "board members will remain verbally and written," oh, are we, okay, we're striking, "so board members will remain impartial regarding complaints that fall under the purview of district, of the Long Beach Unified School District and staff."
Did you, suggesting the daily operations of the school district might be a simple way to say it?
Fall under the daily operations of-
That works for me.
Does it also work that we eliminate the last part at the time they are made?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Second, and I want to make sure that I'm reading off the final copy here, is under Section 3, the board member "may inform." I'm not quite sure why we use "may" there, if it's suggested and/or optional.
Should we use "shall"?
Well, I think if we're talking about the same kind of complaint that we're talking about under 1D, then we just said we have to be impartial in those operational complaints. But here, again, what's throwing me off is of the nature of the comment and complaint. So if someone comes and says something to me, and it's not a formal complaint, of course I know that I have discretion over whether to share or not, so I think it's unnecessary if we're going to keep the word "may" here.
So are you suggesting, are you suggesting we eliminate number 3 altogether?
If that's the intent of number 3, or the spirit of number 3. If I'm misreading it here, because it goes on to say the commentator complaint, complainant, that sounds like legal official complaint language to me, and if that's the case, then it shouldn't be a "may," because we just said, we, you know, if it's operational or falls under the purview of the superintendent. So if we're going to continue to use the word "may," I would propose eliminating that, unless there's another interpretation of intent, or intent for this item.
Is it needed?
I don't think, I'm saying no, if it's a "may."
Well, I mean, why do we need it in general?
That's my question. Sorry, that's my question. So I would propose, if that's how, if that's what the interpretation is, to eliminate our number 3.
Right. And this was something that was reminded to us last board meeting by Wayne, is that we'll consistently be reviewing these. And so I too can see why removing 3 would make sense, but no, if we come back in a year and be like, oh, man, we need that flexibility.
Whatever happened to 3?
Right, right. We do have the opportunity to bring it back. So I want to make sure that, as important as these are, recognizing that they don't have to be as trivial, as we will be reviewing these on a very consistent basis.
Again, don't read it, Mr. Miller, I think it's unnecessary, because under number 2, we already have a delineated process for formal complaints.
Agreed, agreed. And so I can definitely see how there's, like, a level of redundancy there.
So just one- So just one perspective in terms of looking at number one, which is really talking about general comments or feedback that the board member may receive. It talks about those four points. So I don't know if the intent of three is that if something is sent to the board or the board hears about a complaint, number three is really referring to those complaints that would not necessarily fall under two, which was a more formal.
And that's fine, Wayne, but if it's a "may," then I don't think it's necessary. We can or don't have to. Those are my two revisions, proposed revisions.
Okay. So you're proposing that we eliminate number three?
Correct.
Okay, and what was your first revision?
Revision under D, and we have already the suggested language for 1D.
Okay.
How about four?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Just having eliminated three, I'm wondering why you need four.
Only, again, because we're using, I don't know if this is intentional, Doug, the comment slash complaint interchangeably. So if we're only using this to apply to formal complaints or operational complaints as we're calling them, then I'd want to know from our superintendent what happens. If we're not, if I'm not commenting to our superintendent, "Hey, someone came and complained to me about X, Y, and Z," then she wouldn't have anything to report back to me on the resolution of it.
I do, but it's actually on 2C. "The language directing board members to refer complainants to the district online complaint system does not account for the realities for many of our families. We must recognize that not all families have access to technology, and many of them can navigate, cannot navigate the district's website and may be even illiterate. And so I think 2C should be eliminated."
Ms. Lopez, if we added, or the appropriate procedural process so that we didn't just say digital, or what's the wording, online system for filing complaints?
But when I read this, it just, I interpret this as, now, when people reach out to us, we are basically saying, "Have you gone to talk to this person?" Or better yet, "There's an online system, go file your complaint online." And I think that when community members reach out to us, it's because they have exhausted other avenues. They've gone through all levels, and then they're coming to us as a representative or as a board to say, "Hey, this is going on." And I think it can be dismissive for us to turn them right back, refer them right back to a system.
Right, and I appreciate you bringing that up because one of the things that was actually spoken to in the Community Outreach Plan was customer service issues that can come up while we're out presenting information on our board goals, so on and so forth. And so with that, it is not an online system. It was, at least the way that it was written, it was proposed as there would be district staff there, literally there, to capture any customer service issues and would help, at least at that moment in time, that person navigate how to best approach whatever the issue may be. So to that, I guess my point in all that is saying that in that instance, or at least in the spirit of what was written, that it was not an online system. Therefore, that's why your language in suggesting not only is it an online system or the best appropriate avenue makes sense in that instance.
Yeah, because it's clear here that it's an online system for filing complaints.
On 2C?
I don't actually see that point, but let me just-
2C, it says "online system for filing complaints."
Oh, I see, okay. So that isn't reflective of how the district does its work, how we operate. So perhaps it's just changing the language because that isn't, that isn't how we take complaints.
The goal is still to refer them to the best point of contact for complaints, which is, which is, what, what's the process for that, Dr. Baker?
It's as simple as a phone call. It can go to any office. Actually, the front desk will ask the person, "Tell me a little bit about the complaint," or which office, and then they'll send it on to that office. Many of the parent complaints go to the level offices, and they have a whole documentation referral process that they walk somebody through over the phone. And then other offices similarly. There are also, in the case that someone represents a particular issue that needs to go into our investigation unit or into a UCP, then that is referred out. And I, you know, you all have experienced that because there is a reason when folks get frustrated, they come to you also. They come to you because they see you and they know you in the community, and they don't know where to start. And so there, you know, there are many dynamics that go on with concerns, but it currently does not require an online system.
I want to go back to Mr. Miller's point, though, Dr. Baker, that it still kind of puts it on us to figure out what the best. So is there a, one point of contact, a customer service piece, where we, because again, you know, I could identify three or four potential places or offices to go to.
I mean, if you do not know, if you do not know, you can send it to the board superintendent's office, and it will be directed to an appropriate office from there if you do not know.
So going back to that, "Board members will provide the commentator, complainant with the information." I think that's where we fill in the blank, right, where to go or who to contact.
Send it to Ed Samuel's office, no.
All right, and remove any online system or specific thing that may not be accessible to or pertain to the specific complaint.
Is that S-A-M-U-E-L-S?
Okay, so just to kind of follow up. So are we striking the online system?
No, but I think we're adding more to it.
I would strike.
Yeah, strike. I think it doesn't represent the way that complaints are handled. So it's not current. And I think this also represents a good opportunity, not in the moment, but for training so that you all have a reference, a reference guide to use as you are interacting with constituents and want to just seamlessly either get them to the right person or engage them in a way that they don't feel that they're searching for someone.
Okay, so we also need, or do we need other language once we strike that?
Well, I'm comfortable with providing them information about the district's complaint procedure. And ending the sentence there.
So with information about the district's complaint procedures, period. Okay, are there any other areas of concern here?
For clarification, three is being eliminated?
That's what I proposed.
So at the moment, we've had three corrections that have been made, 9012, one of which was in 1D. The second correction that was made was in 2C. And the third correction that was made was the complete elimination of number three.
In which case we need to change the number of four to three?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion before us. So are we ready to vote? Great. All in favor of board bylaw 9012 with the three aforementioned changes by Mr. Miller? All in favor?
Oh, you're getting credit for all my revisions.
I definitely just got credit.
Well, they're accommodation of all of us, I think.
Right, right. But he just happened to be the last person to read them all out at one time, so.
Can you say it won't be in any campaign letter?
No, no, you cannot. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, right, so bylaw 9012 passes 5-0 with a preferential vote. Thank you, everyone, and that leads us to bylaw 9013, another new one. So there's, the first page is in red. The next page has the edits. And then the third page, with its basically only two points, is the one that we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion on.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yep, we're approving a bylaw that I think altogether should not be in the bylaws. This bylaw prevents board members from stopping by schools without giving the superintendent 24-hour notice. What happens if I just, I have time, and I'm near a school and just want to stop by? And I think it discourages us from coming around the schools, and I think board members should be encouraged to come to schools. And then it also, it also states that, you know, board members would be escorted during the visit to, by the principal or their designee, which I understand-
Ms. Lopez, those two items have been removed. In the copy that I have, both of those items that you just spoke to have been removed from the final version of that proposed.
So the first, the first page of bylaw 9013 is completely in red. And then the second page has edits on the right-hand side. And then the third page is the one that we're going to be voting on. So the page you're looking at is the one with the edits?
So that was changed now.
And then if you, if you go to one more page, you'll see a final-
I see the change that was made to being reasonable. So what is considered reasonable?
It says "if reasonable."
Yeah, so notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable unless a board member is attending a function to which they have been invited by the superintendent or designee. So if I'm near a school and I want to stop by because I have time, what is considered a reasonable time for me to notify the superintendent before coming to the school?
Right, do you have, do you have a suggestion of how you'd like that to read or how you would change that?
Yeah, board members are encouraged to stop by whenever possible at schools. I mean, I think that it's one thing to go there because you want to go visit classrooms and, you know, engage to see what's happening in the classroom. But then there's also times where you just want to stop by, say, "Hello, I'm here if you need anything. I'm present. You know, I had 10 minutes to stop by," whatever the case is. But I think that that's, at least for me, it's going to discourage my visits to schools.
Okay, would you be comfortable in having number one eliminated? And I'm asking because I believe 1A is very important as guidance for board members to check in when you go to a school.
Absolutely.
And so that's why I personally wouldn't feel comfortable eliminating the whole bylaw, but-
No, absolutely. I think everyone visiting a school should be checking in, in the office. And, but I think we should, as board members, be encouraged. And when you have a lot of flexibility and can schedule things in advance, I think it makes it easier. But I think that there's some of us that that flexibility may be a little less, and I think we should be encouraged, again, to stop by whenever possible.
Okay, do we have any other thoughts on that? Are we, are we okay with eliminating that part of number one? Right, the part that says, "Notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit."
So I understand the thought processes in Ms. Lopez's suggestion. And I get it. I would be remiss if I didn't speak to a situation that occurred some years back where I visited a campus on the request of a staff member who attended that campus. And unfortunately, I did not inform Dr. Baker of my visit, and it potentially put me in the crosshairs of an HR matter. And so because of that, I now often, if not every time, take the heavy precautionary step of letting someone on the senior team know that, "Hey, I'm stopping by this campus" because I would hate for any of us to be blindsided, coming there with the best intentions of coming to support a teacher, to support the campus, to visit a performance, and then all of a sudden have put ourselves in some major crosshairs that could have financial implication, HR implications, et cetera, et cetera. So though I understand the reasoning in the completely striking of number one, I would also be remiss if I didn't share that anecdote because I think that that is really the undertone of why it was put there in the first place.
So, Mr. Miller, on that, based on that scenario, do you think it would be helpful? And again, there's a difference between asking for permission to go versus letting the superintendent know, "Hey, I'm headed over to so-and-so." Because if there is anything that we may not be aware of, either going on in that school or that campus or the particular space that we're visiting, it would behoove the superintendent to let us know about something that we may not be aware of, either at that school or in that class, whatever it is. My question then is, if that's what you're getting at, as it reads right now, "have been invited by superintendent or designee," that's where, to me, if I'm invited by a teacher and I don't know that, or invited by a PTA rep and I didn't know that, I think we still fall into the same situation, right? So I don't, I don't know if this fully even addresses that, Mr. Miller, as it's currently written.
Could we say notify the superintendent's office?
Dr. Baker, let me ask you, if, if this bylaw read, "notify the superintendent's office," would that be sufficient in-
I think it actually complicates it, and I'll just think of the practice that you all have used. This bylaw is for you to decide. I withhold my opinion about it. I will say in practice, what I have experienced with you. So you used one example. I can think other times, just a simple text message, which I also might say, "Be sure to talk to, to highlight something that's going on at the school." So while it feels like it's restrictive in nature, it also reciprocally allows me to make a suggestion. I will also say that it's common that if you have been to a school, that staff reaches out to their senior team leader to just, you know, let us know. And so if we're not trying to, you know, get around something, you're not trying to, then a simple text message seems like the simplest version, and it allows for reciprocity and sharing the good things that are going on at a school site and protective of you and the kind of experience that you described, Eric. And I have no opinion about the, what you decide to do about the bylaw. That's in practice what I wanted to share.
Okay, thank you.
We do have, board members must check in at the principal's office. I think that the principal is a leader at their school site. And then we're following guidelines and we're identifying ourselves. And I think that we should also trust our administrators at the sites to, to give us some guidance.
You know, I, I hear you on the, "We need to trust our administrators at the sites to give us guidance." But those administrators may not be aware that there's, you know, a teacher or somebody on campus that will eventually, you know, pull us aside to, you know, discuss something that we should not be a part of because it's an HR matter or something. So it might not necessarily be a school administrator who's aware of that. So it sounds like, it sounds like there's, well, I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a consensus on this change.
The language on being escorted is removed, correct?
Yes.
I don't see it anywhere.
Yes.
If we're weighing in here, I'm okay- If we're weighing in here, I'm okay with giving the superintendent a heads up. It's not asking for permission. There's no timeframe. But I would, I would suggest removing the invited by superintendent or designee, because then it gets complicated on who we're saying is a designee here, and I do want to have the flexibility to stop by, I got extra time, or, hey, I'm stopping by five back-to-school nights. Or whatever, a Sankofa meeting, a community partner event on a Saturday. So I, I would say notify the superintendent if reasonable. And remove all the rest of the stuff, but keep A and B.
Okay, so- Okay.
Sorry, Jill, my mic's off too, yes.
My concern was just, I called the superintendent's office, and they said she's in New York. Parsons too much.
But, but they know. She would know that you were there.
Enough?
So it says, notify the superintendent of any visit. Do we want to specify with the text, with the, we don't want to, that's just procedural, that's just- Okay, so do I have this correct? That the way we want to vote on it is to keep number one with the amendment that after it says to which they have been invited, we have a period instead of the rest of that sentence? Okay. Are there any other changes to the rest of the bylaw?
So you're keeping, you're keeping one?
Yes, because I'm going with the majority. And so I'm, I'm-
Can I ask, I might as well ask right now?
Yes.
So I know in the, in the, in the near future, we're also going to be voting on censoring board members. Let's, let's say that one of the board members forgets. So excited about visiting a school, forgets to, to send that notification. What happens then?
I, I don't think, I don't think the board member would be, you know, punished in any way. I can, I can see for myself how I may forget to do that because of the scenarios that you presented earlier, where you just, you, maybe you're passing by a school, you, you have time, it's during the day, you pass by a school, oh, I want to say hello to that principal, or whatever. I can imagine myself doing that. So in that case, I don't think there, there are any repercussions, I don't think, you know. Well, I think, I think we're saying that we want it in there to avoid possible, possible delicate situations that we could be in as board members. Because sometimes visits can be weaponized by maybe employees or, or whatever. And so this is, this is just in there as a protection for us, but if we forget or, or, you know, neglect to notify the superintendent or the superintendent's office, I don't believe, I don't believe that's gonna create any problems.
And this isn't just about this bylaw, but when I think about bylaws, I think about standards. For example, standards for the teaching profession, where you're laying out, like, be clear about the expectations. This, this represents, like many of others, represents just best practice in terms of governance, and helping to define the difference between board work and superintendent work. And so this, when I read the "if reasonable," feels like the relationship that I would want to hold with all of you. It's why I like to visit schools with you. It's going together so that you can get to know people, and I can experience a school through your eyes. So I think that "if reasonable" is a qualifier that means, you know, if you're out and about and you can stop by, it, it doesn't keep you from doing this. This doesn't have anything to do with censorship. It just describes the best process, how we'll operate together.
And along the spirit of what Jill's speaking to, I'm going to suggest a larger change. Now, once again, this is just a suggestion. You can tell me, we're throwing out good ideas and bad ideas, right? But I think that when I read our bylaws, we've done a pretty good job of providing a preface statement into why this bylaw has been put in, in the first place. And technically, the number one is really talking about the best practice in support of why this bylaw is in place. So why can't we say that literally after the first sentence? That it is best practice to notify the superintendent of any visits in advance, in advance, but is not required? And then we can go right into, yes. But stating that it is best practice to inform.
Would, would that make a difference for you?
Sorry, you don't think that "if reasonable" gets, gets at that?
What's that?
If reasonable?
I think that it does, but I don't know if, if that small statement that I said before, it is best practice to notify. So it speaks to like the intentions of why we're keeping this language in.
I think it does away with the idea of what a bylaw should be.
Okay.
A bylaw should be not about best practices. It should be, this is what the rule is. This is what we're gonna require.
Correct, and it still keeps that, but it, I think that using that term, it's best practice to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance, still keeps to the spirit of keeping us protected for future situations. Or at least, that's my thought process.
I'm looking for a word, but it undermines the idea of the importance of the relationship. And that the relationship is, that you have with your superintendent is that you, you're not talking about best practices. You're just talking about, you should, you notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable. And if it's not reasonable because you're in New York, or, you know, there's something else, it's fine. I mean, but you want to know, we want you to know that we want you to know.
How about board members are encouraged to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of a visit if reasonable?
I like that one.
It sounded pretty good.
I like that one. Ms. Lopez, are you good with that one? Okay, Dr. Beneathus, would you repeat that?
Board members are encouraged to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable. Period.
Okay, then that's what we're gonna be voting on now.
Just for legality, I want to make sure that it's clear. And we, I want to use that exact language, but are encouraged but are not required. Can we add that?
You don't think that's redundant?
I think you want to rely-
Thing is one thing, but if, if I still show up and using Ms. Lopez's example, she, she would still be within her rights to show up to the campus because it's not a requirement.
I don't want to have, I don't like that language. I don't want to have that as an amendment to Dr. Beneathus's. I don't think it's necessary, is what I'm trying to say.
I think it undermines the, the spirit of it.
Okay.
So, well, then I want to continue the discussion, and I'm going to speak to Doug's opponent here. As you were talking to, that these bylaws are really the rules of engagement, correct?
Yeah, they, they, but they communicate something about the relationship and-
Agreed, agreed.
So when you start using language like was just suggested, I think that it undermines, it confuses what you're doing.
Well, in this case, I have to disagree because I, I think that as board members, we, we need the flexibility to be able to visit a school site, even if, you know, we weren't able to notify the superintendent or the superintendent's office before a visit. And so I would, I would like to have that flexibility and make that available to other board members. Now-
It's there.
So, again, I, I'm being very specific about the wording here now. I'm not saying board members must, or board members shall, or board members are required. I'm saying board members are encouraged to notify superintendent if reasonable. So anything in addition to that is either undermining the spirit of it or redundant. If we're encouraged to and not required, we're saying the same thing. Otherwise, I would have said board members must, or board members shall, or board members are required to notify the superintendent. As it reads right now, I think it's confusing at best, and it can be misinterpreted at worst. Especially when we add the, unless the board member is attending a function to which they have been invited by superintendent or designee, because then we're back at square one. If someone invites us, and we don't, and we're there with the best intentions, it would behoove us still to give a heads up to Jill, and it's not requiring us to. But if I'm encouraged to do something, I'm gonna think through, oh, you know what? It might not be a bad idea if I have the time, if it's not a stop, a quick stop, or whatever. Hey, I got invited by these two folks, and you give me some background, Jill. Maybe I'm not familiar with the program, or with that meeting, or what have you. So that's where I would take the word encouragement of, hey, let me check, you know.
And I want to use Maria's example from when we were just about to take the vote, and then I kind of sidetracked us here a little bit. She was saying if I visited Longfellow, and I did not inform Jill that I was visiting Longfellow, then what is there?
I'm not required to, that's-
Not required, okay.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And, and that's why I'm, I'm in support of it. I just want to make sure that there's no firm repercussions if there was a visit that occurred and further notice wasn't provided.
Okay, so here's what we're voting on. We're voting on bylaw 9013 with number one saying, board members are encouraged to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable unless the board member is attending a function to which they have been invited. And then the rest, as it is presented.
Just, if I can step in for a second, just grammatically. The first paragraph indicates that, as such, in conducting school visits, board members will. And then it starts to list those things. So if you modify number one in the way you're intending to waterify, it's not going to grammatically make sense.
And that's where I was adding my, the same, that same wording, adding it as almost, because I read that first couple of sentences in all of our bylaws, it's almost like a preface.
Okay, so in the first paragraph, it will read, as such, in conducting school visits, board members, put the colon there, strike the word "will," and then we start.
And if we do that, then on 1A, then we remove the word "board member," and then it'll just start at, because then it'll read it, yeah, yeah, okay, great.
All right. Okay, so are we clear on what it would say, or shall I go over it again?
No, can you go over it again, please?
Okay, so bylaw 9013 will read, board members are encouraged to visit any school. However, the board forbids such visits to intentionally cause harm to or disruption to the student learning environment. As such, in conducting, in conducting school visits, board members, number one, board members are encouraged to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable unless the board member is attending a function to which they have been invited. A, must check in at the principal's office, follow district guidelines, and have their identification badge visible, and then the rest as it's presented. And as I read that, I just thought, it's kind of redundant to say-
I was also saying board members are encouraged.
Yeah. Yeah, board members, and then we're saying board members are encouraged. So can we just say, are encouraged to notify? Because then if we say board members, that's redundant. Yes, so we're good with that? Ms. Lopez, are we good with that? Okay.
If you can say that one more time.
Okay, I'm gonna start from, as such, in conducting school visits, board members, number one, are encouraged to notify the superintendent of any visit in advance of the visit if reasonable unless the board member is attending a function to which they have been invited. And under A, must check in at the principal's office, and then the rest as presented. And so that's what we're voting on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes five zero with a preferential vote. Thank you, everyone, and next we have item 15.7, approval of board ethics and conflict of interest statement. This was available for our first review at the last board meeting, and we have it before us for approval. So do we have a motion on that?
Second.
And discussion?
Everything in here is in accordance to state law, JF, FPPC, government codes. There's nothing here that violates or contradicts or undermines what's already pre-established in terms of conflict of interest for, for our state, and under education code as well?
Yes, well, where it's, where the government code or ed code is cited, those are the specific provisions. Most of it's in, in line with your board policy primarily. Some of your board policies do refer to the conflict of interest code, et cetera. So yes, it's in alignment either with your board policy, recommendations by, by, under the SOFG governance standards or suggestions, and then also a few of the code provisions that are cited.
I do have a question under number 12. Excuse me, this is just my colorblindness. I see that there's a different color under number 12 of the underlining of Form 700, Statement of Economic Interests. I'm presuming that this is just to differentiate that link to the other links that are under board bylaws in a different color. And I apologize because I don't have a clean, unedited version of this copy. This, this is the copy that I, the only copy that I have here. So I'm not sure why am I, and that shows up as a different underlying color. This part right here, is that a different color, or am I just seeing it as a different color? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. So I'll, I'll roll that back then. I thought that was a different color that that was underlined.
It, it is likely a link. I'd have to check the link.
Okay, a hyperlink to the conflict of interest form, right? Okay, that was my only other question.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adopt?
I do have, I have two friendly edits for this, or friendly, at least suggested. There were two areas in which we referred to board policy when it really should be board bylaw. And so those are the only two corrections I would suggest you making at this point. It didn't get into the piece. Under number seven, it refers to board policy 9011. I would just suggest that that be amended to reflect board bylaw 9011. And also number 10, the same thing. It refers to board policy 9010, and it should be board bylaw 9010.
Can you say that one more time? I want to make sure that, if we're gonna have two edits now that we're all here.
The only two edits are in the number seven, where it says board policy, it should read board bylaw. And number, this is as the citation at the end. And number 10, the citation at the end says board policy- And number 10, the citation at the end says Board Policy 9010. It should reference Board Bylaw 9010.
I think the underlining of number 12, Dr. Benitez, may be a placeholder for a hot link. Right now, the online version on Board Docs, it, it's just underlined. It actually doesn't have a, a link to it, but it's something that, that could be added.
Thank you.
So can we have that reflected as well, uh, Jeff, that that, when the link becomes live or available, that?
Excuse me, if there's a live document, we'll hyperlink it. If there isn't a document, we'll take out the underline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, uh, motion on the floor is that we adopt the, um, Ethics and Conflict of Interest Statement with two minor changes. Under number seven and under number 10, instead of board policy, it would read board bylaw. Um, is there any further discussion?
I think for me, I, um, I have requested that these, um, anything that we have links to, that I get a hard copy. And, um, it didn't, we didn't get them, none of us did. And I sent out an email like two nights ago asking for the links. Um, I didn't go to the, the, the site because we, uh, we typically get them. And so I like the opportunity just to actually, uh, have time to read through, through the, through the entire document before we, before we vote on it.
We had this, we had, um, this as a first review at our last board meeting. And that's two weeks ago.
Yeah, but the links, um, all of the, the documents that, um, we typically, at least I do, uh, ask for the hard copies. And so I was trying to prepare, uh, for this item a couple of nights ago. And, um, and I didn't have them. So I'm just asking if that can be, uh, if that can be just put maybe to the next, uh, next meeting, uh, to vote on, just so that, uh, I would not, I'd hate to vote on something that I haven't, uh, gone through every, uh, all the documents.
Do we have any, uh, any other thoughts on that?
Mr. Otto, all the links of this, um, that, that we have here, um, so let me show you. So all of these are links, right? And so typically, we get the hard copy, um, but even if we would've gotten an email to those links, um, but we didn't. And I don't know if it was sent to me last night.
The board secretary a couple days ago, when you made the request, she prepared those for you and, and responded to your request. So if you, they are available in hard copy. Most of these, just for point of clarification, most of these are bylaws that you've already approved. There's nothing, there's nothing that hasn't been approved by this board.
I know, but, um, I, I just, I just like to, to read them all. And, um, and so I know I did request those, those links, and I didn't check my email last night. But, um, I'm just asking if we could just have another, uh, put this item to the next, uh, meeting and vote on it at the next meeting.
Well, the, we have a motion on the floor. So the motion on the floor is that we adopt the Ethics and Conflict of Interest Statement. And so as we go into the vote, we can all, uh, keep, um, you know, keep your request in mind. Um, but we're gonna vote on this now. So, um, all in favor of adopting the Ethics and Conflict of Interest Statement?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed or abstentions?
I will abstain.
So that passes, uh, four with one preferential vote and one abstention. Next on the agenda, we have, um, item 15.8, "Adoption of Resolution 061825-C, Authorizing Chief Business and Financial Officer to Compensate Board Member Benitez for Absence at Board Meeting."
Move for approval.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
I abstain, Madam Chair.
Okay, that passes, um, four with one preferential vote and one abstention. And that brings us to report of board members. And Alana, you have made it to the end of the meeting. And now we are very anxious to hear about your reflections on your, your time, your service, and your experience of being our student board member.
Yeah, I have loved being the student board member. Um, it was an experience that I never imagined I would have. Um, and I didn't really even know that this was a position until probably last year when I was applying. Um, but it has been, um, an opportunity, like some of you have mentioned, for growth. I have grown a lot, um, just being in this, in this setting with, um, with everyone in, in this professional environment, and the, and the fast-paced and, um, intense work that you all do. I have definitely learned a lot, um, just growing in, in professionally, and then I've also learned a lot about myself, um, in this position that I am, where I'm able to, um, represent all of our students, and our students are so diverse, um, ethnically and culturally, and from different backgrounds and different passions. Um, and through, through seeing their examples and interacting with all of them, I've, um, been able to embrace myself more in all of the different aspects that make up who I am, and find similarities with the different people I interact with, whether it's someone at my own school I haven't interacted with, or that I've interacted with under times before, or someone from school that I've never even set foot on their campus from. Um, so it's been a really, yeah, really incredible opportunity, um, growth-wise. Um, yeah, our, our students are really incredible. Um, and I think, I knew that already. Um, but I think I've just been able to see that even more, um, from the work that I've been able to do. Yeah, and I'm, I'm really grateful that I've been able to be a part of the Long Beach Unified School District. I know that I definitely wouldn't be where I am or where I'm going in my educational and professional journey without it. Um, speci- specifically in the pathways that are provided at the high schools. Um, I know being able to be in a pathway where I'm dedicated to studying engineering, studying something that I love, um, and being able to be so involved in that has totally shaped what I want to do, and has completely prepared me for whatever lies ahead. Yeah, and I've just, there's so many incredible opportunities in this district. Um, and I'm grateful that this, a position, the student board member position is one of them. Um, and that you have all implemented it, even though it hasn't been around for, um, it's only been like three years. But, um, I know that it has definitely, um, been a worthwhile change. And as we go forward, and, um, there are more and, more and more different student board members, I know they'll do an incredible job, um, because the student perspective and student voice is so important. Um, because our, our work is centered around the students. Um, and I've definitely been able to, to learn that more. Um, and one thing that, that I've been able to work closely with, Dr. Twal, um, not only is he helping me prepare for the board meetings, but also in the superintendent's advisory board, um, yeah. Um, and one thing that he says often to our students, um, is that the biggest lie that our generation, my generation has ever been told is that we're the future. And that's because we're the present, and that we shouldn't wait to make change because we can do that right now. I think it's one of the, one of the most important things that I've learned, and that totally stick with me. Um, so yeah, I just echo that to our students. If you have, if you have a vision, if you have a dream, if you, if you know that something needs to be changed, or more work needs to be done, because there is so much more work that still needs to be done. And I know you all are working tirelessly to continue that work. Um, but to our students, if, if you have something, bring it to whoever you think will be able to help you the best, and there's so many resources out there. Um, and if you can't find someone, if you're just trying to, trying to do something, the board is also here, we also have board meetings. Um, so that's also an option for you. Um, but yeah, I just want to thank you all for, um, for your support. I think that was one of the most surprising things is, um, like the first board meeting, just seeing all the support. I was, I don't know that I was surprised, but I was, um, it was very heartwarming, yeah. Yeah, so thank you so much for this opportunity, it's truly been life-changing. Thank you.
Well, I know we told you earlier, but it bears repeating that you have done a fabulous job. We have enjoyed having you as our student board member. And, um, I know your parents are proud of you, just as we are. And so thank you, Mom and Dad, good job, good job. Mr. Miller?
All right, so, uh, I will be brief as we're getting pretty, uh, late into the night. Uh, but, uh, before I get into my point, I want to preface my statements here. And I'll do it by kind of giving you a glimpse into the thought process of Eric Miller. So if anybody has, well, let me take a step back. Those who are on the senior team know that during those graduations, I'm super excited. And as I'm sitting there next to you, I think every time I've sat, uh, on that stage, I've asked the people next to me, what is one accomplishment that you are super proud of? I ask that question all the time because I enjoy watching people work really hard for something and accomplishment. I think that that's why I love sports. I think that's why I love soppy stories on Instagram, because I think that that's part of the life experience, right? And so to that, I often ask that question, and I often enjoy the graduation ceremony because, funny enough, when I ask that question to even a lot of the folks that are sitting here with us today, often it is the day I graduated from college, the day I got my doctorate. Don't get me wrong, often people talk about their families, and that's important. But I almost have had to like remove that part from the question, just because we all love our family. But that accolade of receiving your high school diploma, your college, uh, bachelor's degree, and/or your doctoral degree, is often that accolade that we all have been just so proud of. And it's one of those moments that we would hope that we'd never forget. I share that to say that going to these graduations are just so awesome. It is my favorite part of the perks of the gig, uh, as, uh, watching the thousands of young men and young women who have been in our system as long as 13 years, uh, celebrate with family and friends, um, reminisce on things that they've, uh, accomplished while being in our district. It's just fantastic, and that opportunity of fellowship with those that have been with you along the way is a key component to making that moment as powerful and as palpable as it is. So as I went to Cabrillo High School's graduation, uh, I couldn't help but feel a little bit of angst because of the environment that we're in. In regards to the, uh, ICE raids that have occurred, unfortunately, it was very popular at graduations in Los Angeles. And so I think that that level of anxiety did carry over into Long Beach just a little bit. And so, uh, I can remember at Cabrillo's graduation, uh, just a few days ago, uh, watching, uh, a few young people give their speech. It was my main man Frank, we all remember Frank, he's been here a couple of times. Uh, and then there was another young woman, uh, who was, uh, and I, uh, I apologize because I don't remember her name, but I definitely remember her story. And she told the story about how both of her parents were immigrants. And because of the fears that the media has placed on graduation, they could not be there with her in that moment. And I'm sitting there, and I want to be happy and celebrate, because I told you, I'm a glutton to these moments. And all I could do was cry. I couldn't help myself. I was heartbroken for this young lady, because I knew how important that accomplishment was to her. And I was so frustrated at the space that we're in. And so as I sit here, and I share this story, and I share my frustrations, I just want to continue to uplift, uh, those that are fighting against these very, just, excuse me. I, I get it, the, I, we're in a, we're in a tough space from a federal government standpoint. But those that are standing up and fighting for these families, and fighting for these young people, I just want to continue to applaud them. Uh, as a system, we too, have taken a number of steps to protect our young people. And I want to thank you and applaud, uh, all of the work that we, we've done. But as I sit here and I think about my next graduation, I, I don't want that feeling again, that was, that was too hard. I, I was heartbroken for that little girl, um, because I knew how much that moment meant. And so when we start making future decisions and future planning, I want us to remember this story and this anecdote on how we can continue to make these moments for young people that have worked really hard for those moments as positive and as joyful and as impactful as they are designed to be. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Board Member Arroyo, again, uh, deep appreciation for your service, uh, and congratulations, uh, again. I also want to congratulate and thank Dr. Lund again for all of his years of service, uh, to our district. My question to you, Chris, is you gonna let the hair grow out now that you're retired? So, um, with all due respect, Mr. Miller, it's not the media that's causing fear, it's this federal administration. And, um, we all have a moral obligation to not just congratulate folks that are doing stuff, but we, we need to take action. So the last few weeks were absolutely amazing. I'm gonna read a, uh, I'm gonna take some time to read a prepared statement here. Absolutely amazing, celebratory, uh, of course, weeks with our district. Uh, graduations and promotions, as you said, uh, Mr. Miller, are amazing. Uh, I want to thank all the staff and the principals across the district, uh, and congratulate all the students, uh, again, and the attendees. I know a lot of people went way above and beyond to ensure the safety and well-being, um, of all the students and attendees. Uh, but it, it was also a, a time of great fear and turmoil for our communities, and not just these past two weeks, but in the context of, of graduations and promotions. Many folks have reached out, uh, in fear, uh, of our grads and schools not being safe places uh, at this time in our society. And others reached out just wondering, what are we doing for students and families? Uh, I've had folks continue to reach out to me and, and tell me they're scared. Uh, and others have asked, what, what can they do? Uh, so, look, I've been consistently public, uh, in expressing my opposition to any mass deportation policy, but that isn't enough. Uh, I've had a chance to check in with Dr. Baker this last week. And so, um, there's more that we can and should be doing. So this is what I want to say. I hope everyone's doing their very best to take the best care that they can for themselves, for yourselves, and, and this dangerous time. Uh, but this fight isn't new, it's been a part of our history, it's ongoing, it continues. We continue to press forward in spite of fear, in spite of obstacles and challenges. In spite of the tyranny, uh, and the danger, uh, we still continue this elusive quest for justice and peace. Uh, it's what our communities have done when our communities have been under attack. And it's what we'll continue to do under this current barrage. Our communities resolve, let's not get this wrong, is unbreakable. Our commitment in our communities is unequivocal. Our strength is limitless. Our faith is enduring, our determination is everlasting. Uh, but the courage that our communities have and have had is once again under fire. And I'm not suggesting that we're gonna get through all of this unharmed, unscathed, or unaffected. Too much damage and harm has already been done. Um, but we'll get through it. I'm, I know we will, we have, stronger, united, uh, but only if we act collectively. We need to continue to act courageously, selfishly, and act now, uh, as a district. And not just celebrate those folks that are out there protesting, getting. as a district and not just celebrate those folks that are out there protesting, getting arrested, and risking their lives. Rhetoric is good and has a place and time. But we're in a time where rhetoric is no longer enough or sufficient. Hollow words fall on the same ears and then those same hollow words become weaponized against those very communities that we're trying to protect. So it's a time of action, solidarity, collective struggle, and simple but important and courageous acts. Not just the courage to say, but the real courage to face evil and fear and harm and recklessness. The courage to come out for children, our children. Our children are not safe, Dr. Baker. Our children are not well. So these courageous acts are done and conducted every day in our district. The simple but courageous act to show up at a graduation ceremony, to show up to drop off your kids at school is a simple but courageous act. And we have summer school starting next week. We will have parents dropping off and picking up kids next week. We will have students walking to school by themselves in the face of these terrors and evils that are impacting our communities. So I want folks to share and reshare this. I'm calling everyone in, every one of you, wherever you are right now, watching, watching this, listening to this, or just simply trying to figure out what to do. Those of you that are worried, scared, concerned, frustrated, upset, mad, even those of you that are in disbelief of what's going on right now in our communities. I know there's a lot of folks out there, I know, that want to help. I know there's folks at home right now that are trying to figure out how they can help. There's folks at work right now that are trying to figure out, what can I do, wanting to do something? Well, here we are. We need you. We need you to come out. We need you now. We need you to be around our schools and neighborhoods. Summer school is next week. We need to tell our families and children and students that you are an ally, you at home right now, you watching this, you listening to this later, that you're there to help, support, and protect our students and children. That you are there, that we are there to ensure their safety. A simple hello in the morning or a hello in the afternoon. An extra set of eyes, an extra set of ears. More caring hearts. We need to be public and visible. You need to come to a school board meeting. You need to come. Because we need you to be visible for our communities. Be here in support of our students, our schools, our district. You may not have ever come to a school board meeting before, or to a city council meeting, or to an LBCC trustee meeting. Now's your chance. And it's not just a time to be at a school board or city council meeting. How about if we had 200 to 300 people outside every one of our schools every day, ensuring the safety of those students and families that are dropping off and picking up? If they have the courage to show up in the midst of this, we should all have the courage to show up with them. You may not agree with everything that we're doing as a district or how it's being done. This isn't about praising LBUSD. You know, heck, I don't know anyone in our district that thinks we figured it all out or have it all right. This isn't that. There's a lot that we need to do and need to do better, particularly for our most underserved families and students. But those families and students are under attack, and that's an attack on us. So I'm not asking anyone to come out for LBUSD. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking you to come out and show your support for the children of our communities, the students in our communities and the families, to be present in public so that our communities, our most vulnerable students and families, see you and hear you and know that they are not alone. Come, give a public comment. Cool. But in that public comment, remind our communities that you're here for them and that you're going to stand with them and with our students. Let them see you, let them hear you publicly in the face of attacks, in the face of hostility, in the face of terror in our community, and it's our children facing this. I'm also going to talk about, or talk to our nonprofit partners, our community org leaders, all partners of LBUSD, all the community orgs in the region, even if you're not currently partnering with LBUSD. Come show your support at our school board meetings, at our events, at our schools. Share who you are. State that you're here for students and families. Do it publicly. Do it at our school board meetings. Do it outside of a school. So our communities know. So our district knows that we can count on you, community partners. To all of our friends and neighbors, the next time, and I would suggest every time, you pass a food truck, a taco stand, a street vendor, a store, the market, a gas station, pizza place, delivery person. Next time you order a drink or a dish, next time you pay for a haircut, a clothing article, a car wash, next time you pick up a piece of fruit or produce, next time you see a convenience store worker, a childcare provider, a maintenance worker, a gardener, a drive-through attendant, next time you sit at the park, on a bench, at a bus stop, a playground, next time you go to a movie, a coffee shop, a restaurant, look at that worker. That person. That person of color, that immigrant, that student with a disability, that family member, look at them. You know who they are. You know who we are. You know who I'm talking about, whoever that may be. And tell them, remind them, assure them that they're not alone, that you're there for them, that we are there for them, that this school district is there for them. I'm there for them. But more importantly, walk by your neighborhood school next week and continue to walk by that neighborhood school. Stand by, be ready, stand on point, be vigilant, deploy, guard, secure, be a friend, be an ally, be a protector, be there for students and families. Welcoming them, keeping an eye out for them, saying hello, reminding them. Be an ambassador for what we call safe passages in and around schools. Speak up with your actionable words, not just rhetoric on social media or in an email or in a text or on someone's comment. We need you now to step up in and around our schools, our neighborhoods, our places of worship, our places of work. Reach out to one of the community members, one of our community partners right now. Ask them what they need. Ask them how you can help. Reach out to our principals, to our counselors, to our teachers. Reach out to us. Please, for our students and families, let's direct our fears, our insecurities, our hesitancies, our uncertainty, our anger, our strength, not just at screens and devices. Let's direct our attention and energy to help and support those that are most impacted by these awful, dangerous, harmful terrors happening right now, right here in Long Beach, in our communities, harming our children. Ask what you can do to help and then do it. Don't stop doing it. Keep doing it. Challenge everyone else that you know to do it. We're here, but we need you more now than ever. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Thank you for reminding us all that there are steps to be taken, that there is a need for action and not just words. So thank you. Mr. Otto.
Congratulations on finishing. It's been a joy to watch you, as I said, grow this work that you're doing for the school district. But I'm sure you'll be successful in whatever you do because you, what you've demonstrated here. I, I also want to say congratulations, I think, to Mr. Lund for achieving retirement or whatever the next chapter is going to be. And so, and I went to, I was participant in three graduations this year at Soto, at Tincher, and at Wilson. As I think I told Mr. Samuel, Wilson almost killed me because there are a lot of hands to shake up there and people do. And I had a grandson that graduated from Wilson, which, which made that extra special. But it's a time when we think about education, or at least I think about education a lot and how important it is. And it's been a little hollow because I've just keep coming back to what's happened to our country. And I don't mean in a profound sense, except that, you know, we live in a fact, a factless world. You know, the, the way politics has become is the facts don't matter anymore. It's just what you can say, anything, you can get away with it, you don't get challenged. If you get challenged, they just blow you off and it doesn't make any difference. And it just reminds me of the importance of education. And what the business that we're in is to say, wait a minute, that's not true. Wait a minute, you got that one wrong. Wait a minute, if we're perishing these bylaws and whatnot. Those words are important. Because what you want to do is to be in a position where you are engaging people, whether it's in your community, on your school board, wherever it is. You want to be able to say, I have the authority to say, this is what I think, this is what I believe, and this is why I think that and believe that. And that's why I'm going to act. And if you don't have that engagement, then I think that there's nothing, there's nothing of value that, that remains. That's why education is so important. And that's why a dedication to truth, what's important, is so important in what it is that we do. I, I come to these meetings, I do education-related things, and I think that it's, it's a moment in time where we have to reaffirm that and how important it is. We're going to go away for the summer and, and do things. But in the end, we have to be committed to the facts. And if we're not committed to saying, wait a minute, then there's no hope for how we're going to continue to go forward or how we will get forward. It's, it's become a very strange place. So I, it's been a good close of the year. We had good graduations. I think we had a great school year. I think we were accomplishing a lot as a board with our student outcomes-focused governance approach. And I'm looking forward to the next chapter.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Well, first of all, I just want to wish Board Member Alana Arroyo and Dr. Lund, Lund, luck in their next chapter in life. You won't be missed at the board meetings. Good luck. You, I know, Alana, you're going to do great things in life. And Dr. Lund, enjoy your retirement. And then I'm going to be brief. I'd like to congratulate all the students who promoted and graduated last week. I would especially like to acknowledge the seniors at Jordan High School for their accomplishments. I attended their graduation and just like Mr. Miller, was very disheartened to learn that some of the parents could not be present at their kid's graduation. And to those students, I just want you to know that I understand what you're going through. I understand what it is to, to be present somewhere and your parents aren't there because of their status. And it is my hope, and I will take this time, to, to ask LBUSD to offer our affected students counseling as soon as we can, come the fall. The gas should be made available to our students. And then just to all of our graduates, I hope that as you move on to college, the military, or the workforce, that you remember that you have the power to make a difference in the world. Be an agent of change. Offer a helping hand to those in need. Embrace people who are different from you. Be the voice for the voiceless. Stand up for injustice and hold firm to your convictions. The world needs people who are willing to do what is right and just, not just what makes them popular. Good luck, graduates. I wish you all the best. And to the educators who guided and supported the students along their journey, thank you. I hope that you are now enjoying your well-deserved time off. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. I don't have anything extra to add to this wonderful conversation, so I will leave it at that and pass it over to our superintendent.
And actually, thank you. My report tonight is to give it up to our graduates and to have video that our amazing communications team who was, who were out at every single graduation this year produced in honor of our students. And so we'll close in their honor, and that is my report.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes the business of this meeting. So without objection, we will adjourn. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, July 16th. I wish everyone well. Thank you for joining us this evening.